We're in. Ned?
Okay. Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Judith Garcia?
Present.
Councilor Tenere Garcia, absent. Councilor Lopez?
Here.
Councilor Robinson?
Yeah.
Councilor Cuperro?
Yeah.
Councilor Vado?
Present.
Councilor De Jesus?
Present.
Councilor Haddelberg?
Here.
Councilor Vega? Councilor Taylor?
Here.
Nine members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
I have a quorum.
The Chelsea City Council will hold a subcommittee on conference on Tuesday, May 16th at 6:00 PM to discuss the proposed fiscal year '24 budget.
Any questions? We'll start out on the left-hand side like we did.
Can everybody please speak into their microphones?
Thanks for interrupting me, Councilor. We will start on the left with questions and we'll go work around to the right. Molly will be the last question. Turn it over to Acting City Manager Ned Key.
Good evening, Councilors. Welcome to night two of the budget. We have several departments on this evening kicking off with fire. I just wanted to point out that in the budget message, I had identified 11 new positions. Three of those, we talked about last night with the Police Department and one with auditing last night. This evening will be... There'll be... There's one full-time position that you'll see, that we'll talk about in Emergency Management and Assistant Director. And there's one part-time position, Electrical Inspector, that we're looking for in the Inspectional Services Department. And then we have a part-time position that we're proposing in the HHS Department around Arts and Cultural Affairs. So I'll... We'll begin tonight with Chief Albanese and I'll first introduce Ed Dunn to direct you to the budget page and walk you through the budget.
Good evening, Councilors. I'm happy to be here for night two. I hope you found last night to be very informative. We are hoping to provide the same level of information this evening to walk you through tonight's presentation of departments. The first department is the Fire Department. Page 134 in your budget book is where the Fire Department starts. I'd like to just take a minute to walk you through this department so that you know the structure of the book and you can apply that structure to all other departments throughout the night. So it'll start on page 134. The mission statement for the Fire Department is what starts the budget packet, followed by the department at a glance on the next page. Then accomplishments and goals. 23 accomplishments, 24 goals. Followed by an expense listing, which continues on to page 139. Then the organizational structure is shown on page 140. And then the personnel listing, which goes on for several pages due to the number of positions for the Fire Department. So I'll turn your attention to page 138. And 138 is where the budget totals are shown. The Fire Department, as with the Police Department last night, the Fire Department is one of our larger departments and the budget of $12.1 million represents about 13% of the city's total budget, not including schools. Last night, we had talked about the Police Department. Police Department was 14% of the budget. Fire Department is 13. There are 98 positions that are funded in this budget. One civilian position, 97 members, including all firefighters, the chief, and the mechanic. The salaries, you'll notice, are up 3.71% overall. Under operations, there are several changes. The lighting category has an increase of $7,500. Gasoline has an increase of 8% due to rising costs. We had talked last night about the Police Department increases in gasoline, so this is similar here in this larger department. You go to page 139. At the bottom of page 139, the capital structure is shown. There are three items that are listed here. The first is $50,000. That's Records Management System, which is part of the CIP for '24. I think the CIP for '24 came before you several weeks ago. The second item, $115,500, is for two vehicles, a mechanic's truck and a staff car. The third item, $35,000, other capital, is for the self-contained breathing apparatus oxygen tank replacements. So all of these items in capital are showing up in the budget because they were funded from operations. They were funded from city operations. So if you remember back to your CIP presentation, there is a series of funding allocations. The operations budget is one of those. Free cash is another. Bonding is a third. And we talked last night that there wasn't any bonding in this year's CIP, but normally there is. So the reason they're showing up in this budget and on this page is that these items are part of the operating budget. So at this point, I'll turn this over to Chief Albanese for comments and questions.
Thanks, Ed. Good evening, Councilors. As I address you tonight, I'm joined by John Quiteri, the Deputy Chief of Operations. Deputy Chief Quiteri will be taking part in a lot of the functions over the next year as we address some succession planning within the department. As far as overview, again, the Chelsea Fire Department is an all-hazard department. And what that means is we address all needs of the community. By decade, the fire service has picked up several responsibilities, going back to the '70s with the expansion of emergency medical services. In the '80s, there was a surge in hazmat training and response. The '90s saw an increase in the need for technical rescue, which includes high-angle trench rescue, confined space, and extrication. In the 2000s, we had to plan for the post-9/11 weapons of mass destruction. And the emerging threats that we face today are preparation for active shooter hostile events, the threat to rapid-spreading fires due to man-made materials and the products that are manufactured in our structures and homes today. The widespread use of lithium-ion batteries is becoming more prevalent and the cause of more and more fires. And we have the continued hazards associated with mitigating fentanyl, cough fentanyl, and other synthetic opioids that are on the streets today. The one thing in our presentation that is not quite complete, Deputy Chief Quiteri has a better handout for you that'll give you a better breakdown of our annual incidents from last year. And if you have any questions on that, we'll answer them for you, but it's a much more detailed breakdown. Basically, over the last three years, we saw a dip in calls during the COVID era with people staying at home, less activity on the streets. But in the post-COVID world, over the past three years, we've seen our calls for service increase. And this breakdown will give you a much better breakdown of what we're doing out there in the field. As far as staffing, we see the dramatic increase in activity within the city with increase in housing units. And as the city continues to evolve, it puts a strain on public safety. We have not seen an increase in staffing. Although we have maintained our staffing levels as the city has grown and grown, we have not seen an increase in staffing levels. How we have addressed this over the past few years is with some incremental staffing changes. We automatically increase staffing based upon extreme weather. We automatically increase staffing during working fires within the city. And we automatically increase staffing when we're engaged in mutual aid, prolonged mutual aid responses for structure fires. I just want to make note that I've been talking about staffing for years. And although we have been holding down the fort, over the next several years, you should anticipate some sort of ask to increase staffing. We've tried different models. We've tried different things. We weren't quite ready. But there are things that we could do to increase manpower and I'll discuss at a different venue. But to put in service a small vehicle that assists mostly with medical aid calls, which will free up our larger apparatus. Some communities call them EMS chase vehicles. This is not getting into providing our own EMS, but it's supplementing the needs of the community so that our other apparatus could be free. If you take the cost of some increased staffing, even on an impact basis versus adding stations, apparatus, much more cost-effective, much more sustainable. So I just wanted to point out in the staffing that we have not increased, although our calls for service and basically what we're asked to do every day is strained. The key accomplishments are written in the pack, but I will say that planning for the emergent threats that I discussed is one of the... We have spent in operations the most of our time on. And we did execute a $340,000 Assistance to Firefighters grant to train 34 hazmat technicians. So we'll have 40 hazmat technicians out of our complement of 98 personnel. And some of that is dealing with the fentanyl threat. When there's fentanyl left at a scene, it's a hazmat incident. So we're much better prepared to address those threats. As far as budgeting, last year, I told you that it was the first year that I would ask you for a supplement because we were really short in staffing. We had dropped to below 85 members. And I had discussed with you how hard it was to get people to work, additional staff, additional shifts in this new culture. However, we did not use that supplement. So Chet told me I wouldn't need it, but I thought I would. She was right. I was wrong. And I'm glad because we maintained our budget. So we have a streak of seven years of meeting our budget. So I point that out to let you know that we've asked you to budget appropriately and we've done our side. We've met our end of the bargain by meeting the budget. This year, there's definitely a shortfall just related to utilities because of that cost. So there will be a short supplemental. So basically, over the past seven years, through City Manager Amber Sino's term and my term and with the help of the council, we've modernized our fleet. Our fleet of apparatus is second to none in the metro fire region. We've supplied our firefighters with the appropriate tools, training, and safety measures so that they can do their jobs effectively. And I basically thank you for your support. And I tell you that this is a very reasonable budget that you have passed year after year. There's no dramatic increases here, just really utility and fuel costs. So I thank you for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Start over on the left. Judith Garcia, any questions?
No, I'm okay. Thank you.
Tenere? Nora Lees?
I have a few questions. Thank you so much for everything you do in our community. Thank you to you and your team for being out there and in the front lines as always. We're very proud to have you guys in Chelsea. My questions are regarding EMS BLS response calls. Can you repeat that again for me? What is that related to exactly?
Are you looking at the calls from the sheet, the Deputy Chief gave us, or from...
The sheet that, yeah, that was handed out.
So what's your question on...
Just want to know exactly what those calls are for. Like, what are those calls regarding...
The acronyms.
Yeah, the acronyms. Thank you.
So as far as EMS, all of our calls, because we provide a basic life support response, you'll see 4,907 calls for service. Whether the call is advanced life support or basic life support, it gets categorized by us as a basic call because our service license is First Responder EMT. Our private ambulance and our advanced life support is provided under contract with private ambulance. So this is basically just a call count for you for the amount of medical calls that we're doing. Our reporting doesn't separate the two.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And then on that same note, you mentioned that there's an increase that we're seeing, correct, post-COVID?
We are seeing...
In general?
Increase overall, but especially specifically for medicals?
Yeah, I would like to know in what areas you see the most calls coming in for.
So it's a very good question. And the strain on EMS is great. There's a nationwide shortage of EMTs. We had struggled with some of our EMS providers' ability to cover all of our calls. It's not unique to our provider. But there's a strain on the EMS system at the same time that there's a lack of EMTs in the field. What we're seeing is an increase in 911 calls for everything. People still think that they can get in the hospital faster if they call for EMS. And sometimes it's overused. We never want to discourage anyone from using 911. But we have found that calls for service are way up. And a lot of them could be avoidable if there were other avenues to help people, other means to provide rides for services and things like that. Again, not discouraging 911 calls, but part of the increased call volume is people calling for everything. So we have seen an increase in EMS post-COVID with the world getting back to normal.
Okay. And then that leads to my last question, which is because folks are using 911 in general for everything, right? What... Can you walk me through your collaboration with other departments like ISD? If it's a housing-related call? Or the North Suffolk Mental Health? If it's something related to overdoses? And how then you guys sort of pass the baton to those agencies who are leading efforts and make sure that, you know, the person calling is still connected to resources?
Again, you're on the right line of questioning. There needs to be better collaboration, but it's not just a Chelsea thing. It's a regional thing. There needs to be other means for people to get the services they need that are non-emergency. So sometimes we're tied up at a service call in tying up, you know, an ambulance, a fire apparatus, for something that may be a doctor visit or a transfer, but it wasn't called in that way. A lot of it is public education and a lot of it is collaboration. And it's something that we're tasked with looking at over the next year.
My last question is, last year, we spoke a little bit about any challenges faced when folks, our firefighters, show up to calls and there are language barriers. I would like to know a little bit more about that and how we are this year. And also, if you can share with me, I know that there's a personnel count, but if you have a estimate of the diversity within our fire department?
All right. Can you give me the first half of that again? Because the acoustics are terrible in my hearing.
The first half is any challenges with language barriers when you guys are reporting to a scene?
Okay, I can wrap that all up for you into one. We have... The civil service hiring process has brought in a lot of our locals and a lot of the people that we're hiring are bilingual. I believe that we have a really good staff of bilingual speakers, especially in our younger ranks. So I do not think we are challenged by language barrier issues at this point. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking firefighters in all ranks, but especially in our younger ranks. We've hired, I think, over 30 firefighters in the last seven years. So as far as diversity, as far as meeting our consent decree, we are still under consent decree. That is going to expire. But with or without it, more than the consent decree requires, we have more Latinos and Spanish speakers applying than non. So the consent decree will be expiring. But we have brought in our residents. We have brought in Spanish-speaking young firefighters. And I don't think that we have a gap when it comes to that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Again, thank you and your staff for the work, especially with the budget and the overtime. I just have one question, well, one comment. Maybe you can just, you know, give me a little better understanding. And it talks about your accomplishments and it's number 12. And I think you were just kind of talking about the collaboration and stuff. I just want to, if you can just speak a little bit, how that has worked together and how that somewhat helped you with the calls as far as who has to go and who has to be there at what time?
Sure.
And what emergency situations?
So another great question. I'm so proud of the relationship that Chelsea Fire and Chelsea Police have here. It's outstanding. That is not the case in a lot of communities. It just is what it is. There's sometimes conflict between the red side and the blue side in fire and politics, I guess. But here in Chelsea, we have been planning for the awful crisis that the nation's facing with active shooter events. We have been actively planning since 2017. These are joint... These are unified approaches to dealing with these active shooter events. As you saw most recently in, was it Nashville or... The one that was in Tennessee, the horrible shooting in Tennessee, I always... I don't know if it was in Nashville. I believe it was Nashville. But you see that there was a very coordinated response where the police pursued the shooter and fire and EMS were behind them to help save lives. That is the model nationally. It's threat suppression and hemorrhage control is the national model. And it requires that police and fire work together on an interagency basis. And we have great collaboration here. We've been training like that for years. And I humbly say that we are leading the metro fire area with how well our departments have worked together. So our departments work together, you know, daily on service calls, on calls for help, on certain types of call for services with emotionally distressed people, people facing opioid challenges and alcohol abuse challenges. But the pinnacle of that is preparing for active shooter hostile events. And we have a great relationship. We train regularly. We are actively, this month, conducting tabletop exercises to sharpen our skills with Unified Command for police and fire. And they are the lead agency and we're there to support them. But we are training very fluently with our police department. We have a great relationship. Thank you.
We'll come back to you. Todd?
So I'm curious. At this point, I think you've made a lot of progress from when you started. And I think you're to be applauded on the job that you've done with the Fire Department. I feel really good about, I think, where things are. But I'm curious about today, what's really the biggest challenge for the Fire Department in Chelsea as far as public safety goes?
So I think we have made progress over the last several years. And it's not my progress. It's the department's progress. There was just a history of... There was a history of just a bad relationship between the Fire Department and the city. No fault of any one person. The progress we made is department progress. If anything, I think I was able to just calm the situation down enough for it to start to correct itself. The single biggest thing we face right now is more and more we have the emergent threats that I talked about. We're preparing for everything today. Active shooter, lithium-ion batteries, fast-moving fires, the threat of neighborhood and area fires. And we're doing it on the same manpower that this city has had for the past 20 years, I assume, right? Since the receivership, where they dropped staffing and went back to normal, we're kind of doing the same with what we've done for the last 20 years. And I look at things realistically and honestly. And we have three pumps, two trucks, and a deputy chief. That's what protects East Boston. That's what protects Everett. So our apparatus distribution is not short anyone else's. But we could use more staffing on the apparatus we have. If I had more apparatus today, I could use it. More is better in this game. If you gave us another pump and another truck, we would put it to work tomorrow. But sustainable change that we can keep, I think we have to start looking over the next several years in increasing the staffing first. Increasing the apparatus and stations is a much bigger project, much more expensive. But I would say that our modern threats are just that we're facing more and more challenges every year. Our firefighters have to be experts in more and more topics. Managing fentanyl, managing hazardous materials. Every lithium-ion battery fire is a toxic environment. It becomes a hazardous materials incident. We're asking them to do more and more and more with the same staffing over 20 years. So although I know that additional apparatus, and I know I keep repeating myself, but I want to hammer that home, we could use it tomorrow. But I think we have to walk before we can run. And I think that increasing staffing over the next several years will help us meet these challenges better.
So let me just follow up on that. That's the things that we can provide to you is kind of one side of the equation. The other side of the equation is, what are the types of things that the city can do that are proactively, that are going to kind of lessen your load on the demand part instead of the supply part? Do you understand what I'm saying? What are the types of things that the city can do to decrease the need in a proactive way for your services?
Honestly, we're a busy, densely built, densely populated inner-city community. There's a lot of need for services here. I think only in the public education side, we may be able to help reduce occurrences of preventable fires, help reduce calls for service for EMS that should be directed to a primary care physician. I think public education is the answer, but these challenges are not going away. They're being added to year after year.
So that's kind of my point. My point is, is that, you know, you find yourself now multitasking so much more than in previous years. And the workload is just, is becoming, you know... So I'm trying to think about ways that, you know, the city government may work better in concert to try to alleviate some problems that we can maybe address that's also going to allow you to deal with the challenges that come in a more, you know, controlled and kind of, you know...
No, and I appreciate that kind of critical thinking and thinking of ways to help us. And, you know, there's a lot we can do. We spend every single day adjusting our operations to meet the daily needs, you know. We talk about it every day. We make plans every month. We make plans every quarter, and we're constantly adapting. But I will tell you that we have suggestions that I think would help. But at this point, we're going to continue doing what we're doing. Hopefully, you support us financially and the way that you have. And just understand that at some point, you'll probably see a proposal to try to expand in increments to get some more help in the field.
Thank you.
Councilor Haddelberg?
Just to try to orient myself and make sure I'm reading things correctly. I'm looking at the sheet on just the counting of the different incidents. And I'm just trying to understand the fire piece of it versus the medical piece of it. I can see that the two charts total to the same number. I can see that the number of fires is different on the two of them. Can you just help me understand the bottom chart, fires, you know, NFIRS series, and then the top, working fires, vehicle fires, vegetation fires? What are the other 200-ish fires?
Yeah, so here's... So basically, that's why I said what we were giving you in this booklet just wasn't sufficient. And it got by me. I didn't realize that's what was going to be printed. Basically, this is the data that we pull from the National Reporting System. You see working structure fires. Those are actual working fires, multiple armed fires that involve a structure or more than one structure. When you see Series 111, 100 fires, you see 233. Those are content fires within a structure that didn't...
It's not a working fire.
That didn't... It's... They're either content fires or the working fires that didn't involve the structure. So we had, you know, cooking fires. Fires contained to objects of origin. Fires with quick knockdowns that didn't invade the structure. Depending on how the report is entered, that's why you have these different types of breakdowns. But this gives you a little bit more. Is there any other specific line that you're curious about?
No, I don't need to go nuts. I'm just trying to... There's a big difference between 230 and 60-ish, and I was just trying to understand, so, yeah. Then, if I'm looking at the comment on the sort of goals and initiatives, you were talking about the EMT stuff earlier, shortages in EMTs. Obviously, the bulk of the calls, there's a ton of calls for the medical side. What's the strategy? What are we doing with goals and initiatives with finding solutions? What are some of the ideas that are out there? Like, what are things that can be done?
So one of the things is, we do have the largest ambulance provider. Cataldo Ambulance is under contract right now. They are the largest provider in the area. They have the most additional resources, providing support services when we have working fires and things like that. I think all of the ambulance industry is short. I think they're aggressively hiring. They've increased their salaries. I've discussed my concerns with them. But what else we can do? I think the way that we try to recruit for fire, I think we should, we could try, and we're discussing... I think the way that we try to recruit for fire, I think we should, we could try, and we're discussing recruiting for EMTs that can work for our ambulance providers. So someone that might not be, you know, entirely interested in the fire service, might be interested in the medical component. And with the raises they've gotten, they're pretty good jobs. So there's one thing we can do is help them with recruiting within the city. So that's one of the things. Public education is one, recruitment is another. And I'll, I'll throw this out there, I didn't want to get too far into this, but there, there's a, I call it the Cambridge model, but the city of Cambridge has these, they call them squads. They're basically pickup trucks that carry equipment and EMS equipment. And what they do is they take medical calls off the apparatus, so we're not tying up an engine in a ladder. This model, some cities call EMS chase vehicles, and some call them squads. This is the type of program I think that we should implement over the next several years. And if I, you know, if we have the chance over the next year, I'd like to work out with the union and the city a pilot program. We try to do that. But I think in, starting with an impact shift EMS squad that would assist with medical calls to free up the apparatus when necessary, I think that's one thing we can do. So public education, recruiting, and this EMS, I don't want to take over the EMS business. It doesn't fit our model here. But we can assist better with a different format. And I, I probably will ask to see you folks in a, in a different venue, a subcommittee or something to discuss that further.
Get into it here, but it would help me when it gets to that time. I guess I, I have learned to start thinking almost in apparatus-based way. So like when you were saying add a person to the apparatus, you know, et cetera, I, I can kind of fit that in my framework for how we do things. I need an education in thinking beyond apparatus, you know, if we're going to add people that may not be associated with a piece of equipment, right? Or, or things like this. That's a little bit of a change in how calls get routed and sent. You know, you know, I just need an education as we start thinking about it. So I'd, I'd appreciate that when you get there, if you can start us slow and, and build up some of the knowledge base. I need it, you know? So when you, when we start talking about some of those different things. Okay, cool.
Counselor Cooperall?
On page 139, where it says capital, there's something there, 50,000, it says new, but it doesn't say what it is.
So the 50,000 under the capital expenditures is for a new records management system. The records management system runs the fire department, staffing, payroll, reporting, training reports, occupancy identification. The, the database that we now use is no longer supported with Microsoft upgrades. It's a very good program, but it's a 30-year-old program. It works fantastic, but it needs to be replaced. So the IT department had the expertise to keep our records management system running an additional year or two. This records management system will be the initial cost to bring in a new modernized records management system for the department. And it's not going to be a $50,000 per year cost. It'll be a one-time cost of 50,000, and there'll be an annual service fee of probably 20,000 to 25,000, of which now we, we spend about 12,000 a year on our records management system. It'll be more expensive, but this is the upfront cost, Counselor.
The other one too, that I, I don't get either, says other capital, 35,000. What is that?
So other capital, right now, the other capital for 35,000 is to replace self-contained, self-contained breathing apparatus bottles. The air cylinders that the firefighters wear have a service life. They have to be hydrostatically tested every so many years. We have a certain number of bottles that have reached the end of their service life that we need to replace. So this is just replacing a lot of, a, a, a group of air bottles for the breathing apparatus supply.
And, and over here, I, I see that the gasoline went up, increased. That, because you made more calls or because the gas went up or guys?
That was just the call, that was just the, I mean, if you remember the beginning, six, nine months ago, where fuel went up over $4 a gallon for gas and diesel fuel went up, there was just generally the cost. There is some more call volume here, but not to account for all of that fuel. It was really just the increase in fuel costs.
So fuel cost is going to go even more higher because you use diesel fuel?
Say that again?
Said, the cost is going to go even higher because you use diesel fuel?
Well, we did, I think we asked for an extra 5,000 in our fuel costs this year. They have leveled off somewhat, and I defer to the.
We had, we had looked at about 8%. We had done some analysis with the DPW office on what the costs were and projected out. So we thought that this $5,000 increase, and last night when we talked about the police department, there was about an 8% increase for both of those departments, and we think that's sufficient.
And just, just to point out, Deputy Quiteri reminded me, the gasoline actually is gasoline diesel. The apparatus runs on diesel, that's the biggest chunk of this.
That's what I said, isn't it?
The gasoline is a small percentage of this. I think it's probably 75, 25.
No more questions.
Lamali?
The second part of the increase where there, there was the acquisition of a vehicle, and a, and a staff vehicle, I'm just curious what staff is that? And can you tell me what vehicle it is?
Yeah, so the acquisition of vehicles is our mechanics vehicle and our training officer's vehicle. And these are just on a replacement schedule. We have, we, we've been, we, we have a set schedule for service life. For apparatus, we try to go 10 to 12 years on, on pumpers, 12 to 15 on aerial apparatus. Both of these are over 12 years old. Our service schedule is 10, so we've been pushing these off a little bit. That's why there's two this year. I try to keep one staff vehicle per year, but there's two this year because we pushed off the mechanics vehicle from last year. And we do recycle our vehicles with DPW because they're not used in an emergency fashion. They, it, it does provide them some resources. So as we upgrade, we try to shuffle some of our resources over to DPW.
Good. Question about the form that Quiteri passed out. I know it goes back to 2020, and I know that was like the beginning of the pandemic year, so I'm assuming, I don't know if numbers were higher than or lower. I'm just curious if the 2019 numbers would be more comparable to the present year, or if, or if it's just been a steady incline.
I, I would say the 2019 numbers are more comparable to present day. The 7330, we were off about 1,000 calls with the pandemic with not any activity on the roads. I mean, we, we were down. And if you go back several years, you'll see our call volume was 10, 12,000 calls. We've done a lot already to adjust what we're doing to try to keep this manageable. We've, we've exhausted all our resources to control call volume is basically what I'm saying. But your point is, is correct that it would be more in line with today's numbers than the 2020.
And, and also, I just want to say that I recognize that we continue to have development and bring more projects into the city. And of course, that puts a strain on every department. I'm, I am scared, not just for the fire department, but for every department, about how big we're getting and how we're going to sustain that in the long run. But, but I'm just going to keep saying that at every department, whenever somebody comes here and presents, I'm just going to keep saying it. Because it, it just, it's, it's, it's almost like we're, we're intentionally doing something and not thinking about the aftermath and not backfilling in the way that, that we should. And the people who pay at the end of the day are the residents because they're not getting the services that they should, and you don't have the resources that you should. So I just wanted to kind of say that. Thank you. And also, in seeing a lot of the new firemen that have been coming in, I have seen, it's more diversified than I've ever seen in, in previous years. So I really appreciate that. It's so nice to see local kids and familiar faces in the fire department. So thank you for what you all do.
Thank you. Counselor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Albanese, you're in the hot seat. I will be asking you a few quick questions. Question one, I realized when you came in, you introduced Mr. Quiteri, and you mentioned plan of succession. Are you planning to stay with us or leave?
So my contract is up June 30th of '24. I, I will not extend. I, I believe I was here for transition. The transition lasted longer than I thought. Deputy Chief Quiteri is, and I, he's here, so I'll tell you, he's the most qualified deputy chief that we have that in, in the normal line of succession, we don't have a full-time city manager, but he would be my recommendation as the replacement. And we've worked together for just about all of these seven years. So part of my responsibility is the succession plan, and that's already underway.
Okay, okay, you see? That was a tough question, deputy chief. Anyway, next question for you. I do want to highlight, congratulations. I see that the increase in budget was only 5%, and that's impressive. So congrats on that. I also want to commend you, I've been here for eight years, and I know you've done incredible in terms of getting grants as part of your budget. Do you anticipate any grants that may be running out that we might have to pick up the cost for?
That's a really good question. At this point, no. We had a SAFER grant that ran out. A SAFER grant was a staffing grant that ran out, and you have already absorbed that. Our staffing was a little higher during that. We've dropped a little bit, but we're at a sustainable level. But the answer to your question is, there's nothing that you'll be picking up in grant cost. We have done well with grants. We probably have three or four million dollars' worth of grant money in the past seven years.
Congratulations, that's huge.
Nothing else will be dropped on your plate there, other than if we come for an ask to address the staffing that we've been discussing.
Okay, last question. You said we're currently at 85, is that correct?
Say that again?
For staffing, are we at 85?
No, no, no. The staffing right now is 97, includes myself as chief of department and the department mechanic. My office manager, Mara Sanchez, is, makes us 98. But firefighters with the mechanic, we're at 97. That's our staffing model, we're fully staffed right now. I do want to add, because you asked, we do have four members in the academy now, four recruits in the academy. I've asked the city, the acting city manager to not include their salaries. What we'll do is, they'll be extra over the first half of the year in anticipation of some retirements. We'll cover their salaries out of the personnel costs that we have in the budget. I anticipate our overtime costs will be a little lower while we run at 100 or 101, but we are fully staffed at 97. 85 is the number we dropped to during the pandemic.
Okay, what's the ideal number? Considering, you, you, all I've, all I've heard you say today is we're having staffing issues. What's the ideal number?
It, it's tough to give you that because more is better. I could, I could use 100, I could use 110. Right now, I will say that we are adequately staffed at 97, but we need more. And we're going to be working on plans to ask for more. Right now, we're, we're doing, we're, we're holding things together with what we have, we're fully staffed. An ideal number is really hard. If we ran an EMS chase vehicle, that would add another eight members to the department if that was a full-time proposition. If we were at a piece of apparatus, you're talking about the need for apparatus station in 16 members. So I would say 97, we're adequately, adequately staffed. We're protecting our community the same, if not better, than any area around us. But our needs will increase as time goes by.
Great, thank you, that's, that's all for me.
As a delegate for education, I have a couple of questions. Will the fire department consider to create a pipeline for our youth, just like the, the police department has? I would love to see, you know, our high school students be interested in becoming firefighters at an early age. Is that something that can be discussed or something that?
So that's a great question as well. I've discussed this with Gladys in the past, that the, the police department does a great job with the youth academy. It is much more difficult on our side for a couple of reasons. One, our staffing is predominantly on the line. We don't have a lot of day staff. The, the police department has a lot of SROs assigned to schools, they have people that are on day staff, they have people that work just days. And shuffling around their day staff makes it a little easier for them to, to run those types of programs. It's not that we can't do it, but the, the majority of our resources are on apparatus. I have a, a, a small day staff, four in fire prevention, one in training, one in hazardous materials, and, and the deputy chief of operations. We just don't have an abundance of, of manpower available to run that. It would be something that would have to be developed and done just on overtime. Not that we can't do it, but we have been so pressed with issues that it just has not made it to the top of our list yet. It's something that I know the community wants. It may not get done under my watch, it might get done under someone else's watch. But it's on our radar, but understand that our makeup is quite different. The police department has a lot of day resources that we don't.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, Chief. You mentioned in regards to the batteries, the lithium batteries.
Yes.
And the amount of water that it takes to engage that fire, to put it out. I know on Route 1, there was a Tesla vehicle that caught on fire, and it took about 25 gallons of water to put that fire out. So my question is, do you have access to a foam truck? Or is that something we're going to look at down the road?
Foam is ineffective. Extinguishing agents other than water are ineffective with lithium ion batteries. Even though they produce energy, the extinguishing method is copious amounts of water. We just added a PowerPoint to the website that the IT people and our website people are trying, are working now to get all the video clips to run. So when that's available, I'll direct you folks to that. And, and it's a short presentation, it'll probably take you a half hour to watch. And it'll get into the lithium ion battery threats as well as other home safety issues that we put together for the season. But just understand that lithium ion batteries are everywhere today, from your phone to your laptop, bless you, to mobile devices, that you see these portable scooters and e-bikes. And as the device gets bigger, the battery gets bigger. And if you haven't seen the videos, they burn quickly, they, they, they extend to areas very fast. They give off toxic smoke, and they are very tough to, to extinguish. When you get up to electric cars, it takes thousands and thousands of gallons of water to extinguish a fire in an electric battery pack in a vehicle. As they start to burn, they get into a phase called thermal runaway where you can't stop them from just burning up until they're gone. It's a, it's just, it's, it's, it's one of the threats that we face now. We're not going to stop the use of lithium ion batteries, they're everywhere, but you will see more and more fires caused by them. They are the main cause of fires in the city of New York right now because of the delivery services and how many of these mopeds are brought into people's homes, hallways, and, and there's fatal fires associated with it. I will say, the single biggest thing that we can tell our community is, do not use aftermarket chargers, do not charge damaged battery packs, and, and don't overcharge. If you can, if you can help it, don't charge these batteries overnight. Only use factory, factory authorized charging equipment to charge these vehicles. But there's a bunch of information on our website, and I will direct you to it, Counselor.
My, my last question, if you can address the outer grade, is that because there hasn't been any civil service testing for firefighters to be able to move up?
Just one more time, the civil service testing?
Yeah, outer grade.
The outer grade expense? So the, the outer grade expense is, is a fluctuating number. When we have extra manpower, we have people on shift that move up and work in a higher grade. That's what the outer grade is for. And the heavy seasons with vacations or for short staff, the outer grade number will go down. The outer, the outer grade is pretty much been level funded for years. It's hard to anticipate if we're going to use it all or not. It, it's, it's a pretty much fixed expense. We have sometimes when we cover things with overtime, and sometimes we cover things with outer grade expenses.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the city clerk. The city clerks oversees the city clerk department and also the parking department. And Jeanette Centron White is here. I'll point out two changes that have occurred this year. Our longtime assistant city clerk, Patricia Lewis, Patty Lewis retired this year in January, and a new assistant city clerk, Gabriela Solis, has come on. You'll also recall that in last year, this is the first year that we're funded an elections administrator, and that elections administrator is Jim O'Regan, and Jim came on in December. So in a, in a staff of five in the city clerk's office, two are brand-new employees. So we'll leave it to Ed to.
Okay, thank you, Ned. If you turn to page 96, 96 in the book starts the city clerk department. And as I mentioned in the fire department, it starts out with mission statement and then department at a glance, and moves on to accomplishments and goals, and then the expense. So under the expense section on page 99, the salaries. So under the expense section on page ninety-nine, the salaries are up six point three percent, mostly due, there's a department reorganization, Ned mentioned that there were two new positions, and there was a retirement of a long-term staff member here as well. This department staffs five positions, you'll see those listed on page one hundred. The operations area on page ninety-nine shows several increases totaling sixteen thousand dollars. Jeanette can get into the details on those in a minute. The next page, page one hundred, shows capital expense, and there's a ten thousand dollar item there, and that is for voting machine upgrades that were part of the CIP. The CIP for twenty-four included a ten thousand dollar item for that purpose. In total, the clerk's budget is up with all three of those categories, salaries, capital operations, eleven point six percent. I'll turn it over now to Jeanette for comments and questions.
So I just, on page ninety-seven, that total is up from the previous year, so we've collected in certificates and licenses over thirty-five hundred since the previous year. And as Ned mentioned, we're fully staffed now. We have the new elections administrator, and then as many of you, I hope everyone knows, Patricia Lewis has retired, but she has stayed on part-time to help our office and with the training. And then both are, both training with her, with everyone in the office, they're learning quickly, so that's been working well. And then we've been working on our goals on that end, as far as poll worker recruitment, we want to, we're working on how we can make elections more visible as far as like adding a table at Chelsea Day, National Night Out, and then just little things, increasing census response, even just putting an online fillable form, so it could just add something for another avenue for someone to, I'm working on submitting it online, but just another way to get to that form if you lose it. And then we wanted to purchase in our, in my asks, it's election promotional supplies that we're looking to do, again, just to make us more visible, like feather flags outside the building during EV. I had all these ideas before and now I have someone to work with to like execute them. And then as many of you know, the upcoming election dates are September twenty-sixth, if held, if we have one, November seventh, and then included in this budget is the March fifth presidential primary.
Questions on the left, Jutta?
Thank you.
Canary?
So, you do a phenomenal job. I see the lines and I don't know how you can manage so many people with so many different issues. Fully staffed, do you still feel like you need more staff?
Right now, I don't, I, I don't, I'll know more in a year from now, to be honest. I think we have a good team, I feel like this is the first time, I know everybody, you know, thinks of me and thinks of the lines. This is the first time where I, I feel like, from my perspective and what we see day to day and what we deal with, that we were much stronger this year. And so was the residents and what they had to bring and just learning this process without extending it because of COVID and what they need to bring. And so I, right now, I feel like my office is much stronger. I, I, I feel it, like, and I think we all do. And the focus, it allows us to focus more on, on, on our own responsibilities day to day, our duties. But when that renewal time comes, I feel like this past renewal, we had six, seven people, like, we were, I, I think we did a good job, but the lines as far as the parking, and we'll get to that on the other side, but, you know, the numbers show that people tend to come in late. And I am not perfect and I always look at how I can do better. And so we are working on ideas of how to get that renewal, get that message out there and just get people in here sooner and actually force, not force, because I don't think that serves our community here for Chelsea, to force everyone to do it online, but to keep encouraging, because the online did increase, the online applications. So maybe it was people seeing the lines and walking away and saying, I'll do it online.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So, Mr. President, if I could just make one comment here before Jeanette continues, there are two departments that Jeanette is responsible for overseeing, the first is city clerk, which we're on now, and the second is parking. So we haven't done the presentation on parking, so we'll just make mention that any questions related to the parking division would be better if we hold those to the presentation section. Thank you.
No problem. Nora Lees?
Thank you. I echo my sister counselor, you are doing a great job. Every time I have to reach out to you, I'm like, oh my God, this woman is so busy, is there anywhere that you can help me? And you're always so responsive and so, so sweet and, and helpful, so thank you. My question is, you answered one of them, I'm glad to hear that for everything related to the city clerk listing in this department, folks are using more online application requests and things like that, so that's, that's great to hear, and I agree, I mean, we don't want to make it only accessible online because we want to be mindful of those who, who aren't able to navigate, but it's, it's nice to hear that folks are using it more for those who can. My other question is regarding, on page ninety-eight, accomplishment number three, this one is huge for me because I like to see how departments are collaborating with each other. Can you explain to me a little bit more this one?
So, when I, a couple of years ago, I noticed that when someone came to our office and they said they needed a business certificate, our response is always, first, we will issue the business certificate and we give them the application, it's very straightforward, it's no different than other, any other community. We say to them, oh, you'll have to go to inspectional services and start there. So they go to inspectional services and then they come back, and I started wondering, at what point does certain items go to licensing? And so I started talking to those other two departments about how can maybe a flyer, which Alex Train's office started this, started working with someone who reached out, it's just pure coincidence, about a, kind of like a booklet for people who want to start a business and it says like, what are those steps and who to speak to? And I'm just, just talking out loud, but I remember something about, I didn't know that if you, something about like if you had a sign or if you had a TV or, and something about a hair salon, that didn't go to licensing. And so they actually must have picked up on it and decided to work with someone on what, like, how would you know that? I, you know, so I just, we started this conversation and saying out loud to everyone, so what is it that you're looking for? So it's not just about go to, get, go to ISD to get occupational, your occupancy permit, to visit the licensing and have a conversation with them, see what you need. And then those two departments are talking to one another about, having a conversation about someone that was in their office, and then when they come back to us, they can't, it's, I'm not really involved, but I became a little involved in saying like, telling them to ask more questions. But I, I felt like that was a positive thing that...
Huge.
Small.
Yes, yes, thank you so much. And I think this goes also to the points that my colleagues, Counselor Vido and Counselor Taylor made, that there are things that within City Hall we can do to make the service that our families are receiving more accessible and just less hectic, right? Something as simple as just saying, I may not be completely involved with these two departments, but I'm noticing that there's a gap here and communication can fix it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. You do a great job, great collaboration, and I just want to say that on number three here on page ninety-eight, where you're talking about the scanner and the tablet reader, I think that's going to be a huge success for the city of Chelsea, it's going to make your job that much more efficient and much more greater and easier to manage, especially leading up to Election Day where we sometime get discombobulated. But overall, your accomplishments and your outlook is great, and I just, one question is, how are you doing for poll workers? I know during the pandemic, it was a scatter for everyone, poll workers, have you started reaching out and marketing and trying?
Yeah, so Jimmy O'Regan, I am working with him now on, we want to, we want to start going to them, so for example, fourteen Bloomingdale, the Margolis Building, two sixty Clark Ave, and setting up meetings with them and just explaining to them what we do, what poll workers do, the different positions, and just help them fill out a form, and just see how we can recruit from there. And even if, so to be a poll worker, you don't have to be a Chelsea resident, and if, if they know someone else, because like you said, since COVID, that number and the interest has dropped. But we, in the past year, people have come back to us, but I think that speaks more to, they enjoy working for us, that's, that's even before my time. And we show them how much we appreciate them working for us, and so they come back. And, but we want to, we want to grow that list, so we have people to fall back on. And then during twenty twenty and in twenty twenty-four, I, I want to hire additional staff just to process the EV ballots separately and to just have poll, the inspectors like focus on Election Day.
Right.
And then EV site just for the, with that scanner that...
That's what that was, competence.
Yeah, yeah.
I understand, I get it, thanks.
Todd Taylor, questions?
So, I got to say, I think you've probably got one of the more difficult jobs in City Hall, just because you're, there's so many different things that you, you, you have to deal with. You know, one of the things that struck me and one of the things that some of the other counselors have talked about and that I continue to try to, try to mention is that, you know, one of, I think one of all of our jobs is to try to, you know, provide a good kind of customer service experience for, for our citizens and, and residents here in the, in the city when they come to do stuff. Usually people are stressed, I mean, I am too, you know, I mean, I, when I come in, I mean, but I, you know, I, I tried to do the parking thing online, and as you know, I had a problem, it didn't quite go through, and I thought it did, I'm like, why didn't I get my sticker? You know, so I, I know that it's not easy. And I think in, in those times of long lines, I mean, I don't know about, you know, if, if, if trying to, I'm, I'm sure it'll work itself out over time, which I understand, you know, you'll, you'll tell us more next year, but, you know, I, I think even, even maybe trying to hire temper, maybe some temporary staff in those times to try to, you know, get the line moving more, or whatever we can do. But I got to say that, you know, I think you've done a pretty fine job in dealing with those, with those challenges. There's so many different things, I, I just don't, I really don't know where to, quite to start, but one is, is there, is there, what do you think the biggest, what do you think the biggest challenge that you have in, in kind of bringing about that kind of smoother customer service to the, to the people coming to the windows? I mean, what, what, what is, what's the biggest challenge in that? I know we've had, you know, Patty leaving and, and, you know, she's, she was, she's so great for, for so long, I'm going to miss her, do, you know, coming in, but, you know, what are the problems, what are the biggest problems that you see in, in, in facing your department?
As far as the renewal of the program?
Well, just in, in gen, in general, in general.
So I, I'm looking at ways of how we get, so when I do the numbers of, even when we extended it last year, I am trying to think of how we can get that corrected or get it in the right direction, because even with that extension, the greatest amount of renewals were after it was due. And I don't even ticket, which obviously we don't tell the public, but I don't ticket day one.
Yeah.
I give it a grace period, and even with that, we put flyers on cars, maybe, you know, starting that a bit, even earlier. So instead of three weeks by the time before I ticket, maybe it's a month and a half where the POs are putting that on the car, even though they're not expired yet. We've opened renewals sooner, maybe even considering the ten dollar fee starts on the day that it's first late. So while we don't charge the ten dollars, we waive that, but anyone who renews after that date has to pay the ten dollars. And I think sometimes when there's a penalty, it forces people, they don't want to pay any penalty. So these are just things that I, I want to, I'm, I'm thinking of adding a flyer with the census next year, saying about the renewal of the stickers, because that mailing's already going out, it's going out to every resident here. So again, I want you to know that I'm constantly thinking about what more I can do to get the message out there. And we do really try our best, I just don't know how to curb the late renewal, renewals, because the numbers are there, it's, they're late, so I, I'm working on that, I'm trying to figure that out.
I, I see the postage is up by seven thousand, so...
So on the, yeah, so the, the postage is more...
It's more related to elections, this is the clerk's department?
So on the clerk's side, it's really just the, the mailers that go out for the, we've had an increase in responses, and then the returns, and then the confirmation cards. So since twenty twenty, that, I feel like that number obviously showed in the redistricting and that, that number, but postage is going up because we're, our mailing has grown. But that's on the city clerk's side.
I'll leave, I'll leave my questions about parking to the appropriate time. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Cooperall?
Yeah, I have a few, a couple of questions. I see here there's a rent and lease building that went up fifty percent. What do we rent, what, at the church?
St. Rose, so the auditorium, so it's twenty-five hundred per election, and we have our two locals this year, and then we have a presidential in March of next year, so within this fiscal year. So it's another twenty, so every other year, it's, no, every four years, it's an added twenty-five hundred.
And the other one is general office supplies that went up a hundred and ninety-one percent.
Yeah, so that's where I want to start purchasing like sandwich boards for the early voting, the feather flags, like things to, bless you, to promote elections and, you know, to get people into this building, or just promotional elec, election supplies.
What do you do, you send them letters? How, how do you promote it?
No, I'm talking about like around, like for, like when early voting is in this building, I want to, to put out like, I want, I've seen it out of the city halls where there, you, you drive by and you're going to see that, oh, wait, I can vote here today. We, we want to start promoting it more. And then with the permanent election laws that changed, the one hundred fifty foot rule applies now, I've always practiced it, but now it applies at an EV location. So when we have it here in person, I need to have it now on both sides. So we used to practice on one side, but now I have to have it on all at the entrances. So I want to be able to put, I don't want to continue marking the brick, so I would like to, I, so I just need more supplies there for elections, let's say.
No more questions?
Counselor Yonos?
Thank you for all the work you do helping our community, and like Counselor Nora Lees who said, every time we call and, and I... And, uh, like Councilor Yellos said, every time we call and, and I call and ask your question, you always respond. Uh, my question is, uh, on the election administrator, administrator, uh, he only works during the elections, or what is, or he helps in, in your office?
Yeah, so he helps with everything in the office, but, um, because our main goal is to train him in elections, we're slowly go, like he's touching parking stuff, but it's not like he's in it, like right now, like doing the census, uh, ordering the street listing books, um, just preparing, um, looking at, for example, trying to get that poll worker recruitment just to reach out to, because one of the ideas that I, that I had, um, was to reach out to, uh, usually there's an officer that lives at those buildings. So maybe we could coordinate with them. So he's, um, looking at how we do things, how other communities do things. Again, I'm always looking at how can we be better? Um, if I, you know, I'm always looking at what we do, um, compared to any other community or, um, the statute, are we not doing something? So he's, his main focus right now is elections, the election side. But yes, he, um, he will be trained, fully trained on both sides to, to help us with that.
I know there has been some, uh, confusion on election time. People go to one poll and say, no, you're not here, you go somewhere else. So he's gonna try to fix all that?
So that was partly, uh, because of redistricting. So if, um, perfect example is, um, Judith, like by one street is now in District Eight. Um, so she, you know, so you may have gone to this polling location, assuming, um, we did send out cards, um, that's after redistricting, letting you know that your polling location changed, that you are now in this ward and precinct. Um, so I'm hoping that by November's election, people will be used to, um, used to where their news, new, new polling location is. Um, but we do encourage people when they come in. So when that happened this last election season, we let them know, oh, you can always look online to see where your polling location is. So hopefully that sticks with them and it's on our website when they go to the elections that they look up where they're, you know, where they're supposed to be.
Thank you.
The only information that they would have received to let them know that the polling location changed would have been that postcard. There's really nothing else, right?
No.
Yeah, okay. Um, I just, honestly, I don't have any questions, I just, I think you do an amazing job. Um, I, it's funny, like you have departments coming here and they're like asking, you know, sometimes for, for like more staff. And I look at all the things that you do and you're like, oh, no, we're okay. And I'm thinking, I've seen those lines, but, uh, you know. Um, I have, I do have questions on the parking side, but I, I do appreciate how responsive you are with the city councils every time I have a question. I, I love how you really think outside of the box to try to meet residents where they are and provide quality service. I appreciate the initiative that you take in working with other departments where, where services intersect, where we don't obvi- we don't, we haven't historically worked together. So I really just appreciate what you bring, uh, your professionalism, all of it. And I just wanted to tip my hat to you, thank you.
I have a question. On your, on your number one goal, uh, for twenty four, I, I applaud you on taking this challenge on because for every person that does not respond to the census affects our community development block grant money. So every person that doesn't respond, we lose like two hundred and fifty bucks. So we can't seem to get out of the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar block unless we have more people respond to the census. So I just wanna thank you for taking that challenge on.
And I love the investment and civic engagement, elections person, I think, that was genius.
So I wanna just thank you on that note and we can move on to.
The fun stuff.
Parking.
The fun department, okay. This is on page one sixty one, page one sixty one of your book starts the parking department section. The mission statement is on page one sixty one, followed by the department at a glance, the accomplishments and goals. The expense listing is on page one sixty four. So the salary in this department has two staff positions funded from it. There is a six percent decrease in the salary from the prior year. There's a new employee that is in the twenty four budget that was not there in fiscal twenty three. The fiscal twenty three budget had an employee with more experience and with a higher grade level, a step on the grade level. So this new employee is at a lower number. On the operations side, there are increases in other services for parking enforcement contract obligations. And the gasoline is up minimally, there are four vehicles, I believe, that are, that are run out of this department. So overall, the budget is up in total nine point five percent. So Jeanette, you're up.
Um, so on page one sixty two, um, the tole- total amount collected, uh, from twenty twenty one is over forty five hundred compared to last year. Um, it's not really, uh, too much to report on the parking side. We do have an increase in renewal online, as I said earlier. And, um, unfortunately, some of those numbers of the renewal is after the do, the deadline. And again, like I said earlier, I'm, I'm working on getting that better.
Any questions, Norleys? Cal Brown? Todd Taylor?
Yeah. So, I don't know how it happened, but, um, a lot of people call me because of the, their issues with, um, with the, uh, with the vendor who hands out the tickets. And there seems to be a lot of, a lot of complaints. I, I spoke with the city manag- with the previous city manager about the issue when things had, had come up and there was a little uproar in the community about how, how people were being ticketed or, or, you know, uh, but, but I guess, I guess I wanna ask you first of all, are you happy with the current vendor? Or are we gonna be looking elsewhere? Uh, I think the contract is up soon, is that correct?
Is it this year? I don't remember.
I think you're in year two, I'm sorry, are we in year two? No, I think, I, I believe we have another, at least another year and a half. A year and a half to go on the, on the contract? Um, I think the last time I talked to Tom Ambrosino about it, he, he said that the contract was coming up at some point. So I, you know, um, you know, that, that, that they would look at it then. But, I mean, um, I, I know that there've been a lot of, a lot of complaints. I mean, sometimes people complain about parking tickets, you know? And that's, I think, a human, uh, human nature to, um, uh, to do that. But there's been a lot of, um, there's been a lot of complaints about how, like, I think the behavior of some of the, the, the people actually writing the tickets. You know, and getting into kind of back and forth with people and, and, and this kind of thing. And, um, so I just, I'm con- I'm concerned about, um, hearing all of it. And, you know, it's hard to sift through what, you know, what's, what's legitimate or what isn't. But it makes me wanna ask about how, what, what, what's your evaluation of this particular, uh, vendor? And if, if, if we're going to try to, um, sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, kind of putting the screws to them a little bit and get, getting them to, you know, s- kinda get on their own people to, to, you know, buck up or whatever, you know? So I, I don't know, I'm asking.
Um, so I, I am happy with our vendor. Um, so you, uh, really did draw a picture of what I deal with, with the appeals. It is, it really is a matter of your, he said, she said.
Yeah.
Um, and the pictures that are attached tell a story. And we, um, all POs, as, as long as I've been in my office, um, are told to issue the ticket if there's a violation and that it's up to the hearing officer, which is me and who, my predecessors, um, to make the judgment or dismiss that ticket. Um, and, uh, we do have, uh, many of our employees, uh, English is not their first language. And I, I feel like a lot of time, it's when they're speaking to the residents or a visitor of Chelsea, that's lost, their message is lost in translation. Um, so I find that that's a problem, but, um, this is a tough job. And we're try, our, our vendor is always trying to, uh, recruit people. Um, it's not easy, uh, ever since, especially since COVID. Um, and so, um, whenever we do see a problem, and so because I investigate things with such, uh, care, um, if we do have a bad seed, I think we do a good job of weeding them out. Um, and they've, it reveals itself, like they reveal themselves. Um, but there are always, there's always two sides, um, to each story. And when you see the appeals and its pictures and the history, all those things tell a very, a much different story.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I get that. I mean, I, 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 I talk to a lot of people who contact me and people outside my district call me about it. So, so, um, the o- the other thing is that I'm, that I'm kind of concerned about, I've mentioned this to you before, but I think it bears me mentioning it again, and, and I know it's different in different parts of the city. But with, with our parking policies of just anybody can park in a residential area except between noon and five. And I know that's not the, the case everywhere. But increasingly, we're getting more people coming into the city. And I know it's especially a problem in my area because of the hospital, but it's, it's, it's like people who don't live or work in Chelsea are parking on Chelsea streets. And, and, and I'll tell you, it's really frustrating for people when they're trying to park and there's a car without a Chelsea sticker parked there all day long. And so, you know, I, I think, I think, I mean, something has, does have to be done about, about this. And I'm trying to figure out, because parking's a, you know, it's a, it's a difficult, uh, nut to crack. I think there's a lot of working parts that you have to kind of, problems that you have to solve to make it, to make it work. And we need to increasingly, you know, create more parking spaces in the city. I think we've done that, you know, as much as we could. Hopefully we'll be able to have a parking garage in a few years. I, I know that's on the CIP coming up, uh, in twenty twenty eight, I think. Um, but, but regardless, I mean, it remains one of the biggest problems that people come to the counselors about, so.
Any more?
That's, that's it, I mean, uh, any, any response to that?
Um, so we do, those isolated areas, um, so we used to have one, um, by the Witten Hospital. Um, and then it, um, it was reversed, uh, I think like two years.
Because of visitors, because of the visitors.
So they, the residents came to us, but, um, if you wanted that back, that there's, I can share with you, it's an easy process. Um, and what's nice about that is if it doesn't work, it doesn't work and you can always reverse it. Um, but you, you're right in saying that, so for example, the Traffic and Parking Commission just passed to extend on Chestnut. Um, so it was this portion from Fifth Street.
Yeah, I saw, I saw.
Fourth, and now it's fourth to third. Um, and it makes sense when you see it. But then there's this fine line of where, when is it too much? Because you have businesses on this next street over that you have people who work there who are parking at the meters.
I know, it's a tough, it's a tough, it's a tough thing, I know.
And where, where do we put all the car, it's just, it's, it's a tou- it's, it's a genuine concern. I, I wish I had the answer.
I'll let, I'll let some of my other counselors.
Councilor Cooperall?
I got a couple of questions. Over here on page one sixty three, you have significant increase of number online resident parking sticker renewals. So they should have made the load less of people coming in. And then on the following line, uh, number two, you said accomplishment, annual renewal of the residential parking program from automatic mailer to an annual renewal initiative by resident. So what, what's happening? Do you have some online and some come in?
Most people come in, uh, in person.
So.
I, I, it, I, I don't know.
But here you said significant increase of number online resident parking. So they should have lightened the load. So if you get an increase online, it should have been less people coming in, right?
Yeah, I wish more people would come in, but you have, so for example, you might have fifteen hundred online, but then you have three thousand people that wanna come in and that's just in one, in one month. Um, so that's why I kept, I keep saying that I, I have to keep working on how do we, how do we do that? How, how do we get more people online? Um, and the greeters have been helping with that. When people came in and they were trying to stare them away, so when we were still before it was late, trying to tell them, well, why don't you go online and apply, all you need is this, walking them through it to show how easy it is. And we're just gonna, we, we have to keep working on that.
But I got complaints from people, right?
Mm-hmm.
That they came in, they weren't knowledgeable. They brought papers in and then when they came to, to the, to the beginning, they says, you got the wrong papers. So isn't that some way we can educate the people before they come to your window? Because a person waits online for two hours, three hours, then he comes to your window and one of the clerks there tells him, hey, you got the wrong information, you gotta go back. So I was wondering if there was any way we can make it easier for people, like, when, before you come in, you should tell them, this is what you need, so they can check their paperwork before they do come to you and don't wait three hours and then have to go back. That was one of the biggest complaints I got from the people calling me, that they waited online and then after a long time online, they came up to the clerk's office and said, I can't give you a parking sticker because you don't have the right information. But then here, so it's, is it easier for them to get it online? So make me understand, online, don't they give you the same information?
Yeah.
So.
So nothing has changed from year to year. It's license, uh, it's an ID, mass ID or license valid or a utility bill. And so from year to year, certain, certain residents don't have the same utility bills. Um, so then it is a matter of when they come in or if they go online, if we had to reject them, we would let them know. We tell them the reason and we even ask them to call the office to further speak to us. Um, we noticed this year, uh, I say that this was more the most successful year because most of the residents came in and knew what they needed, they had it. There was confusion in the line, unfortunately, among residents when they were listening to one person's situation. They thought, oh, she, I heard her say you can only have this. And so they were coming back, they were leaving and coming back with everything. And we were saying, no, you, it's, if you have an ID, it's the same thing every year. Um, so I think there was confusion there, but yes, is there something I can do better? Yes, next year, on the flyers that we put on the cars, I think we're gonna put more focus on what it is you need to bring in. And if you have any questions regarding your items that you have, that you call us beforehand, that we make, uh, um, social, so we, uh, we post this on social media, that we advertise separately, not just the renewal, but what do you need, like its own, uh, presentation online. But yes, we, I am, I am working on that, I want to work on that. I, I recognize that that was a problem, that it, it's always a problem. Um, but I, I know it doesn't look like it on your end, but this probably, I think this was the most successful renewal. I know there's lines, but on our end, people understood, more, most people came in and said they knew what they had to bring in. They were in and out once they got to the front of the line. I just, I, I wanna communicate earlier on what you need, the due date, um, and I, and I plan on working on that.
From the years past, I remember when you mailed it to the people, right? It was a lot easier, you didn't see the gigantic lines as you see now, that people wait two, three hours just to get there. So why did you get away from that? What was the reasoning that they were giving you? Because if you're gonna do online, they're gonna give you the same thing, right?
Yep, so.
So what would be the reasoning for you going away from that kind of?
So the, by ca- um, creating annual renewal, it cre- it allows for the most accurate applications. So we find fraud, we find that to get the sticker, they'll, uh, they'll renew. So we find fraud, we find that to get the sticker, they'll, uh, they'll renew right, they'll have the, uh, the address changed to Chelsea, and then in a month, or sometimes the next day, it goes changed to another community. When we were doing automatic renewal, we were assuming that you were still in the city because you were active at the time. The right thing to do on the sticker was that if you moved from the city, that you report that you no longer live here and that we cancel your sticker. That wasn't happening. And so we were literally finding people with a, for example, Somerville sticker and a Chelsea sticker, an Everett sticker and a Chelsea sticker. And so we, to, to force people to renew is to force us to look at, are they still in the city? Do they reside here? Um, many people want our stickers just for the convenience of everything, the train, the bus, the airport, um, so all those things, we, people, people want our sticker. And so by forcing them to renew, we're catching those things. Um, it requires applicants to be in good standing. So when we were doing that automatic renewal, we were just saying, you owe how much? We'll just, we'll get it when it goes to the R and V. All they're doing is accruing fees, but by having you be in good standing, um, that was it. You were done with your debt or your, you know, whatever outstanding balances you had. So there are positives to an annual renewal. I don't know of any other city, um, that did annual renewal because I can tell you all the problems with it. But Revere actually caught, uh, did the same thing after they saw that we did it and they're finding the same problems we found with it.
Oh, and another question I have. You gave forty-five commercial parking stickers. So that means that forty-five commercials, that's on page one sixty-two.
Yes.
Alright, so, so that means that with these commercial parking stickers, in which sense, are commercial vehicles in small cars or big trucks?
Commercial plate, the registration, the plate on the vehicle is a commercial.
I, I know from years past that there is a certain amount, like you can't have a truck so high, you gotta have so many tires. I know all that, all that, so. But you can still allow trucks that size, as long as they meet the standard, they're not twelve feet or whatever it is, instead of having six wheels, got two wheels. So all these people that are applying for these, right, are these people that are living within the city? Or, and they have commercial vehicles and come to you?
Yes, so.
What have been our streets?
Yes, so the, oh, so in twenty nineteen, the council asked me to review the program to see where there were loopholes, how can we tighten it, um, and, and create more spaces for the residents. And so one of the things that, um, I recommended wa, was that there was a non-resident, um, sticker and it was sold to anyone who wanted to purchase it. And though all these vehicles fell into that slot. Um, and we were allowing them to park here for three hundred dollars without registering the car here. So we tweaked it in that you're a Chelsea resident, you may have a small business and you have a commercial vehicle. And as long as it's registered to Chelsea, we allow for one per household. Then we, we limited one per household. So this number has dropped to, uh, from, I think it's, uh, it was a hundred and thirty in a six-month period. And so we cleaned that up and it forced people to either, you can bring your car to Chelsea, typically larger cars, or you left it at your job. And you, you drove your personal vehicle to work and you took that vehicle on the road and that, so we're not a parking lot. That's what you're trying to, you, we're, we don't want to be a parking lot of vehicles.
Okay, counselor.
Hey, I got one more question on.
Make it brief, please.
Okay, and you, over here, you, that night visitors pass. It ain't, it's, it, there's a lot of them. So what are they, how does, what that consists of, night visitors pass? What, what does it mean, uh, and let me understand what that means between a day and a night visitors pass? I thought, they got different times?
Yeah, so, so for example, where, um, you live, it's only nighttime. So there are four, five, um, I think it's five isolated daytime areas. So for example, um, Central Ave by the free shuttle to the airport, the courthouse. So those are mon, uh, mon, so the courthouse is Monday through Friday, eight to six. And then, um, midnight, midnight is the entire city. So in your area, we only enforce midnight to five. Um, but you live right next to it, you're just a few streets down from a daytime nighttime.
Cause half of the street where I am is resident parking and the other half, even if you have a resident parking, you can't park.
It's daytime, so it's daytime enforcement and then only ni, nighttime only enforcement. So a person who lives in the daytime area would get a visitor's pass that allows for daytime visit, visitors and nighttime visitors. And then someone who does not live in that area would only get a nighttime visitor's pass for the same amount of two visits.
Alright, thank you.
Counselor Lopez.
Yeah, Jeanette, my question is, uh, regarding, uh, the officer, the parking, parking person with the police officer that go around the city. Do they go to different areas every night or they go around the city, drive around the whole city?
Uh, we switch our, um, our plans, so we may start at, so we pick off where we, we pick up where we left off, but once we get through the city, we do a separate plan. So we go throughout the city. Um, it may take, um, depending on the time of year, we may get through three quarters of the city. Um, we do do it with a police officer, there, we're not side by side. We're in the vicinity of each other in case there is an incident, or for example, in the summertime, um, when there's parties or whatever, if we need an officer, they're, they're there. Um, we write only residential parking, um, permit violations and the police officer writes all other. So crosswalk, the trailer, as you mentioned before. Um, hydrant, twenty feet of an intersection for the police, uh, the fire department, so that, you know, um, any serious intersections. Um, but we, we do that together, we're, we're in the vicinity of one another when we do it overnight.
That was gonna be my next question, um, the trailers and trucks, uh, vans that are people are bringing from work and they park on the city and, uh, they're taking the spaces from our residents. Uh, enforcement, is any way we can improve that? Maybe enforce a little bit more because there's a lot of vans that are parking in a tight corner where people coming out from whatever street is and can't really see coming out to the main streets, like Center Avenue, for example.
Yep, I will speak.
I think we need more enforcement regarding all those trucks, vans and trailers, hitched trailers and unhitched trailers, that I see them all around the city.
Uh, yeah, I will speak to them more about it. Um, and speak to see, I, I'll see what more we can do on our end to assist with the police. Um, but we do, as you already know, we communicate when we first meet with the officer at midnight, we communicate about problem areas. So when you email me, that email becomes part of our, what are we doing this week, tonight, to, tomorrow night? Um, so we, we try to address the complaints of anyone who makes the complaint in an area.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor DeMoli.
Thank you. Um, I have a few things and I'll try to be quick. Um, I just want to echo what Recupero said about people, um, I got a bunch of calls about people who waited in line for hours just to make it to the window and they're like, oh, you don't have what you need. Then they leave and call me and then I have to ask you and then they have to come back. And, and it's just, I don't know if it's that people are just maxed out after a while and they're just like disoriented, because I'd be disoriented with that line. Um, but it just, I, I just want to echo that that was another complaint that I got. I don't think that there's nothing that you need to say that you already said, you're looking at it, you're trying to do better, great. Um, the residential parking program, I don't know if there's a way that we could stagger the issuance of these permits, so it's not, everybody's coming in at the same time. And I don't know what that looks like and honestly, I don't want to even think what it looks like. Um, it, it sounds like a really hectic job, but I know it's one you can handle. But if there is an opportunity to stagger it, so not the entire city needs to come into City Hall at one time, that would be.
So we used to do that with, um, when we only had visitor passes, when it was only two areas. Um, so it was always Central and the waterfront.
Yeah.
And what that created was just more time spent with it and people, it, it, all it does is create a longer period of renewal. Um, so most cities do it the way they do it because let's get this over with.
Get it over with.
Just come in, we get this going. So now, I don't know if anyone's noticed, we don't have the lines.
We don't have the line.
So, um, I think that my approach, and I, I would hope everyone, if they could just be patient with me, see what, if those other tweaks I make, make a difference next year in those lines. But I will say the lines did not look like they did, um, just even a year and two years ago. Um, and I, I don't say that as, just as a credit to me. I think the residents understood what they needed to bring more than before, by having the annual renewal was forcing them, alright, I need to bring this, this, this. Um, yeah.
I, I agree with you. We have to let things play out to really deter, determine if we need to change the pace. I get it. Um, there was, I kept trying to come to this line and there was, I couldn't. I went online and then I did it online, it was great, but I didn't get the permit. You don't get it right away, that's the problem.
Seven to ten business days.
Well, it took, yeah, it took a while and so I got a bunch of tickets in between, so. Um, you know, I don't speak as just, you know, the president, I'm also a client. Um, okay, so, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is, um, the enforcement. I want to echo what Counselor Lopez said about hitched trailers, commercial vehicles. It looks like there's only forty-five folks that, um, applied for those. They all must live in my neighborhood. Um, because we have the Chelsea Housing Development Project happening, um, in my neighborhood, the, the parking situation is atrocious. Um, even with police detail at the bottom of Central Ave, they, they still are allowing sixteen-wheelers to go up Bellingham Hill. My car got smashed the other day. It's been smashed about four times in the past couple of years because these huge sixteen-wheelers, they just don't fit in our streets. Um, and, and, and parking has just become a lot. And I, and I went back, there's actually a pending subcommittee that we're going to have, so I don't want to really hammer out the details here too much. But we definitely need to do something about either posting signage or, or it feels like, and I'm bringing this up because it says that you oversee the Traffic and Parking Commission. It seems like the Traffic Parking Commission, and I respect anybody who's on these boards because it's hard, it's volunteer, I get it. But it feels like they don't talk to each other or that there isn't like a grand, um, like a holistic bird's eye view of what's happening. So I'm trying to leave a street, this street's blocked, I take a left, that street's blocked, and that's what Chelsea feels like. It feels like a damn maze. Now, I know, we, we're dealing, we're, we're growing in ways that we can't even handle. Um, and, and, and there's traffic everywhere and I can't believe that I live in a city that's one point eight square miles and it takes a half an hour to get from one side to the other. But if the Traffic Parking Commission and the people who were enforcing the rules actually did what they had to do, I think things may not be as hard as they are. So the other day, we had an order that came before the city council, um, that the Traffic Parking Commission approved five parking spots for a construction project on Shamet Ave for a whole year. I thought that was rather excessive, um, to have five parking spots in this dense, the densest area I would imagine of Chelsea. Um, and so I asked that we have a subcommittee about it. But then come to find out that at the Traffic Parking Commission, those five vehicles were already taken and they came to ask permission from the city after the fact. And so there, there's conversations that Counselor Recupero has been talking about, bringing up about, cr, critical, been critical about the Traffic Parking Commission. And I understand that things are hard and I'm trying to figure out how do we all work together to make things happen. But it just seems kind of asinine to me. It doesn't make any sense that something will come before us, that we have the right to approve or deny, but it's happening anyway. So it's like, don't waste my time. I'm, you know, I have things to do, a lot of us, for us to come here and, and this isn't, this isn't your fault. I know this isn't your fault. I'm just saying that there are a lot of things happening here in the city as we continue to grow and you know because your office is growing. As a result, we have a lot more people living here, we have a lot more services that we need to pri, uh, provide. We're at capacity. But we also need, so we need to start thinking a little bit more, um, open about how this affects our existing residents. And like, we need to be a little bit more coordinated in the way we're doing things and that comes with enforcement and that comes with, um, making sure that the Traffic Parking Commission is functioning as they should and that the, the city council gets the respect that they should as well. So I'm looking forward to us having a lot more conversations. I needed to bring this up because it all, it is all related to parking, but I love you, I love your department, you do an amazing job. Um, and thank you for, for, for being here.
Thank you, counselor. I, I have a question for you. Did you keep track of all the people who attempted to get parking stickers? Who didn't really have an address but lived with, could have been living in my house, but they don't have any bills or anything? Did you track any of that information?
No, because, because we don't process it. Um, that would be an interesting, how, how would, it's because we're not processing it because we're saying at the window, no, your, your car's actually not registered here, um, you changed it. It, it's just verbal, so, and because we're not allowing the issuance, I don't have, I can't attach a number to it. Um, but there are many.
I was just curious if you might have tracked it. My, my, a suggestion, um, that you do at, at voting time, you bring in the laptops for people to be able to look up some information?
The students.
Maybe we might take a look at bringing the students and help with the lines and, um, doing the stickers possibly. If that's, if that's a way that we can do it, if it's legal to do, work with the kids.
Mr. President, will you indulge me for twenty more seconds?
As long as it's a question, we need to be moving on.
Yes, no, one thousand percent. I want to get out of here too. Yes, there's basketball.
We had enough sermons for tonight.
Yeah, I know, I know. Um, Jeanette, I'm just curious, I know that there, the, the commercial parking sticker, can you track what area, if there's like a certain area of the city that's more concentrated? Is there a way of you doing that? If it's too much work, it's not, don't worry about it.
I, 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 um, I just asked the vendor for a report.
Okay, I'm just curious to see, because I have a feeling that it's all in this area, but just curious. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Got a question? Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I really do appreciate your appreciation. It means the world to me. Thank you, good night.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And if we can kind of state a questions, so we can kind of move it along. I didn't say, I didn't say that. I don't want to limit the questions, I want people. I think that's what, that's what I, that's what I said. That's what I said.
Okay. He said he doesn't want to limit the time, but we have to move along. Okay. Let's go, Bee Cravada.
So we're taking this a bit out of order, uh, given the time, uh, some folks have commitments at home to meet. So, uh, in the HHS Division, you're gonna see in front of you, um, uh, we'll skip over Human Resources and Employee Benefits for a moment and we'll take up Health and Human Services, uh, and, uh, the Departments of, uh, Public Health, Elder Affairs, Veterans, Library and Recreation and Cultural Affairs. So I propose right now, we only concentrate on Recreation and Cultural Affairs. We pop back to Human Resources and Employee Benefits and then we'll go through the rest of the, uh, HHS depart, uh, Division. So I hear a sigh behind me, but I'll try my best to get through it. So, um, uh, Bee Cravada is.
Counselors, thank you. I, I would, um, turn your attention and ask, invite you to go to page two twenty-four of the book for Recreation and Cultural Affairs, page two twenty-four. The mission statement is listed at the very beginning, the key accomplishments continue, the goals after that. Page two two seven, two twenty-seven shows the expense detail. The salaries, you'll notice, are up significantly, forty-six point five percent. This is attributed to a couple of things, uh, net at the very beginning of the evening. Talked about some new positions that will be introduced to certain departments. This is one, because we're, we're a position of part-time arts manager is proposed in this twenty-four budget. Yes, um, the city manager had mentioned at the beginning of the evening that there's gonna be several departments in which we propose new staff members. And in this particular department, it's a part-time arts manager position that we're proposing. The second reason for an increase in this line has to do with several, or two, two specifically positions in FY twenty-three that were brought in after the adopted FY twenty-three budget was set. And these individuals were part-time that were brought on to full-time. And that's the support coordinator and a program assistant. So those are the reasons why there's a forty-six point five percent increase on the salary side. You go to the operations section, there are several changes, some up, some down. There's a real allocation of some of these expenses. The sixty-one thousand in youth services is a conscious attempt to increase funding there for our youth services funded out of this, uh, Community Schools Initiative. When you turn to page two-two-eight and two-two-nine, you will see the listing of this, of the positions and their salaries. And I'd point your attention to two things on page two-two-nine. The first is that the school is picking up funding at fifty percent for Bee's position. The other fifty percent is proposed in this budget on the city's side. So the schools, a couple of nights ago, sorry, a couple of weeks ago, had presented their budget and in that budget were certain things associated with city funding, and this is one of those things. The second thing on that page, CDBG funded, there are three positions listed there that are grant-funded for half positions and then there were six instructors. All of those are grant-funded. So overall, the budget is up twenty-three percent for all three categories, salary, operations and capital. At this point, I'll turn it over to Bee Cravada for comments and questions.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Bee Cravada. I'm Director of Recreation and Cultural Affairs for the City of Chelsea under the Department of Health and Human Services. And Recreation and Cultural Affairs provides year-round recreation, education, cultural opportunities throughout the city's public facilities and also athletic fields, playgrounds and various other locations. And, and it's accessible to all members of the community. Uh, some key changes, as, uh, was just mentioned, is that we, at, right now, we currently have two community program managers. And I'm very proud to say, one has a specialty in sports management, the other one in arts and education. And so I'm looking very forward to this year coming up about different programming that we can certainly expand on. We also have, um, we're spending, um, more time this coming year focused on the Clark Avenue School and to do more with the Clark Avenue School in the areas of the arts. Um, when it started, we're, we, for the first year, when that school was opened, we didn't get into it because of the structural changes. And then the next year, we were in, and then the pandemic. So it's been a very, very bumpy ride to start anything in that, in that, um, school. And I'm excited right now with one of our managers over there, full-time, that we can expand a lot more. Um, but the two, two key, uh, positions that I would like to mention to all of you, one is a support coordinator. And the support coordinator, um, is, it serves a bridge between Clark and Williams and all the program assistants. We have so many things in terms of being compliant with policies and procedures and our, you know, our, our, our credit cards and record-keeping that this person is really helping us with both locations, so where our communication stays open. The second would be the Community Arts Administrator. This was a key recommendation from consultants who prepared our five-year arts and culture strategic plan. And this serves as the liaison and facilitator between arts and culture stakeholders, uh, stakeholders operating within the city and specifically across all city departments. And so, um, we, we have worked very hard on, on looking at essential job functions for that person. The person would be part-time. And, uh, we look forward to that person coming on and helping us to compose and maintain correspondence with local artists and keep expanding that, that, that whole directory here and all the work that they do within the city. So those are two key changes. And one I want to bring up, um, that I thought, thought was very important when it comes to, um, the, the leagues, all the sport leagues. So I want to thank this group of the fifty thousand dollars as it was allocated for the Youth Sports Fund. That, again, has increased our, our budget here, but eight leagues we have, and of the eight leagues, five has participated in it. And it's just been the most wonderful thing for them. And we expect, again, um, a lot of them, several of them are still trying to, um, put their league together because of how much they were decimated from the pandemic. So hopefully next year, we'll again get more children and more Chelsea children involved. And this, again, the whole key of getting this fund is that you have to keep increasing the amount of Chelsea, of the kids that are, you know, that want to be in sports. And we are, uh, very much diligent in finding, uh, that they are doing this. And so, to go on with one accomplishment, we have so many accomplishments. So that was my, you know, most difficult in this presentation of, of, of what is one. And I would again say, we rebounded successfully from the pandemic and I saw that really happening this past January, believe it or not. It's been, being in the schools, it's been a lot harder to rebound. And our, uh, we're, we're very proud to say we're having day and evening programs. So we're going in the morning and in the evening. The, and this time in the summer, for the last two years, and this will be the third year, we start at nine o'clock in the morning in the parks. And so, we're going six days a week. We have close to a hundred, one thousand nine hundred registrants. And there was an increase of five hundred and fifty from last year. And we've offered in this past year, two hundred and twenty-three, no cost or low-cost programming. Okay? And we've started things such as a Chelsea Running Club. We've been very, very excited to work with the YMCA. And we're having, you know, conversations consistently of how we can get a full-service YMCA here to Chelsea. And it goes with the next goal, uh, one goal that we have is not only increasing partnerships in the areas of education, visual performing arts and fitness, but also in facility expansion. Uh, we need to expand recreation opportunities and public use of municipal and nonprofit athletic facilities. You know, here in New England, we have seven months of cold. So all these children want to come in. The schools are much more busier than ever and they're using their gyms. And so we're consistently looking for gym space. And we've been in negotiations now with Chelsea Commons. I had an incredible, um, meeting today, very promising that we will be getting space over there and a lot of space for the, for the new year. And also, again, we're, we're in negotiation, uh, with more space from the Salvation Army. And not to mention, again, the Clark, the Williams, and we're also down at the Mary C. Burke Complex. So we've got many teams going on, so.
Questions on the left?
Any questions? Yes.
Bee, I, um, I gotta be fully transparent with you. Last year, I was not as aware of everything that you do. And I had spoken to some of my colleagues about the process and about how I, I wish we had this and I see this in other communities. And this year, I've really got to learn more about your department and everything that you do. And so I want to just thank you for, for all that you do for our community, for our youth.
You're so welcome.
To keeping arts alive in our community. Um, I am really excited this year. You're proposing this, um, arts manager position. I think this is huge. This is going to open so many opportunities. In my district in particular, I have folks who are interested in theater. I have a gallery that's not being used right now because, you know, there, there's lack of, of, of leadership in that area to be able to have someone in the city go and say, hey, this is something we can do and this gallery can be open to the community. Um, and then of course, the youth, right? Um, I, I think this year more than ever, as I hear rumors that there are certain legislators, um, outside of Chelsea from other parts that are actually considering, um, cutting our youth jobs funding. Um, obviously, they're not aware of how crucial, um, having these activities, jobs and, and, and just, um, opportunities for youth to get engaged is in the summertime. But, um, regardless of that, as we're battling this at the state level, um,
Councilor, question, question?
Yes, this would actually impact local jobs, right, for, for our youth through, um, through the state funding. And so I'm wondering, um, what type of, uh, how can we enhance more of these summer activities, um, during the summer to reach, um, the age that would typically be applying for a summer job, but for whatever reason does not get picked in the lottery, right? Um, and can you talk to me a little bit more about the opportunities that you have for those youth in the City of Chelsea during the summertime?
For the summertime right now, um, we're, we're putting out for, um, four, uh, four positions that would work with Tenacity. Tenacity is really big. We're expecting at least sixty to seventy-five children to be involved in morning and afternoon in Tenacity. And so we're needing at least four and then we'll have help from Tenacity will bring us a lead person over. And they will be in there in the morning and the afternoon. And we are going to concentrate on Tenacity. We're getting, uh, we have a lot of support from them. So we're hoping to bring on four people for that, that are again, uh, past the age of fifteen, fifteen to eighteen, that are older. Um, we're also looking at interns, two interns that we're bringing on for, to work with the, the managers in sports and in arts. And so that is, you know, exciting for us. So that will bring us to four, that's six people. And then, um, we are also, uh, thinking of bringing on for the coming year, a person more in sports and arts. And again, through the year, not just for the summertime. But again, we're still negotiating that with, uh, Human Resources and with our city manager. And so for the summertime, uh, we are also looking forward to bringing on people from the Summer Youth Employment to be able to work on our programming in the parks as well. And we've got different programming going on inside the buildings and outside the buildings. And, um, the summer brochure has gone out. The summer program guide went out about a month ago. And so it's online right now. And if anyone wants a copy, I can give you a hard copy as well to see. We probably have a total of about seventy programs that are in it. And half of them will, uh, the, uh, the, um, adolescents can join. But we also are looking for adolescents to hopefully help us as well. Some might be a paid position and some might just be volunteer. Uh, but I did not hear that they are thinking of cutting, uh, the summer, you know, uh, youth employment, um, the amount. And, and that is worrisome because I think they are the backbone.
Yeah, it's sad. It's sad. Thank you. Um, and again, that is legislators outside, obviously legislators that don't see what's on the ground here and how important it is. My last thing is, um, when I was young, I was at the, um, the salsa dances classes at Roca. I did the Batuteras with Magali Valentin. Um, I would love to see these cultural things come up, a baile folclórico, right, a lot of this. And, and I did attend one of your orientations for the art grants. And I think it's a huge opportunity for us to increase that because we have so much local artists.
We absolutely do. And one thing I'm really proud of, it's about a hundred and, I think it's about a hundred and thirty, um, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, a little bit more, that was placed to the arts. And I know that Nine Heritage have just been launched last week of, of different, for, for dance and for theater, for murals. So I'm very proud to say that I, I, I'm very happy with the amount of money that we're receiving from Encore and from the Cultural Council, the, um, the Mass Cultural Council. But hoping maybe that we can also get more funding in the future with this arts administrator as a match from the City Council. Um, that was something that was brought up through, um, the consultants. But also bringing on this arts administrator, there is so much money out there right now, federal and, and state funds for the arts. If you look to the Boston mayors and you look around to other cities, they are going after this arts money and hopefully this person can bring on more of that.
Thank you so much.
Calmore?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I read your department at glance and key, um, accomplishments and it goes, what you're proposing and your initiatives in goal for two thousand and fourteen. And, um, it looks like a lot of work. It's a lot of in-depth details and, you know, the funding is coming in. And so it looks like you're carrying, you're doing a great job. And I just want to say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Taylor?
I just, I just want to take two seconds to say thank you for, for what you've done. I think you're doing a great job. I know we're getting kind of behind on time here. Um, I don't have any issues with the budget, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Cooperall?
I only have one, one question on this. Um, I don't see the summer program in this, in this budget. You know, the summer program that where the mothers can send their children to summer camp to like, they used to do it to the Boys and Girls Club? I don't see it in this budget. I don't see where, where it is. There's nothing here telling me that.
Uh, Councilor Recubro, it is there. It's, it's the summer funding for Capic and also for Boys and Girls Club. Those are our two major pro, uh, camps. And then we have the, the ten thousand still allocated for that program.
So, Councilor, that's, that's the youth programs line, the three hundred and fifty-two thousand?
Yeah, that, that's the youth, Chelsea Youth Sports Fund, total of fifty thousand, right?
It's, um, three hundred and fifty-two thousand. The, the last expense line, it's on page two-twenty-seven, just before total expenses, youth programs. And it's funded and proposed funding in, in twenty-four for three hundred and fifty-two thousand. That's the line that has the sixty-one thousand dollar increase. But that line also funds the program that you're asking about. And as Bee said, that there are other vendors here in that line, uh, Capic, youth scholarships for Chelsea Community Schools Programs, youth commission, martial arts, dance, youth sports funds and YMCA and swim programs.
No, that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Those are all on that one line.
I want to ask you one question about the YMCA. You say you want to bring here says, full-service YMCA, community center in Chelsea. The YMCA is not free. It's very expensive.
It certainly is.
So, uh, uh, that won't be affordable to the, the Chelsea kids. How they gonna afford something that's so expensive? Because my nephew go to the YMCA in East Boston and they had a drop-off because it was too expensive. So how, how are we gonna fund that? How, what is the money gonna come to that YMCA, which is, is expensive? How many kids can you send? Three kids? Four kids? That's, that's even, that's a waste. Because it's so expensive. It ain't cheap. It's not a YMCA that's cheap. It's too expensive. You can't.
Thanks, Councilor.
Yeah, uh, we are going to continue to have discussions with the YMCA of Greater Boston. And again, we're exploring this right now. There is no institution that knows in terms of when it comes to also take, of, of industry standards of taking care of, uh, of a city with a wide variety of programming than the YMCA. And you make a point because I grew up in the YMCA. I'm involved in the North Shore in the YMCA. When I lived here in the Boston area, I was in the Y. Some of the programs are expensive and some of the programs are very reasonable. And again, it really depends on the support of donations and it is, it is a, a labor of love. It's not going to just your snap in your finger and a program's going to happen here. You know, where, where would be the location? It would ta, it would take several years, seven years, they've told us, five to seven to build a YMCA. And yet, it's probably one of the, the, the most well-known and well-thought-of programs within, you know, the United States. And so I think it's something that this group is, it's worth looking and researching and finding out about it and seeing how ways we can also subsidize. I do agree, uh, though, I get, I receive your phone calls from other city recreation departments. I receive also phone calls from parents who also, who have left the city, who say that they are so at awe what this city, the city council, city managers have done in terms of keeping things affordable, low-cost. And so, yes, we would need to really work hard at that to make sure that those programs are available, you know.
This, this is the last question. Our city, from what I understand, is going to do a community center. From when Tom was here, he told us there was a community center in the works. Because even the Hopper money told them that this city needs a community center. Years ago, the community center was the YMCA, which the kids didn't pay. There was a salvation to the kids of this city, the old YMCA. You went in, you didn't pay anything. So, this is a low-income city. People can't afford to go to these places. And I don't think it should be the burden of the taxpayers to pay such a high tax, you know, to send them there. So how are we gonna remedy this? What can we do? What would be your solution?
We're trying to bring the YMCA here. I mean, just conversations. If it happens, it's great. If it doesn't, we'll find another way. But at the end, we have to keep trying.
The YMCA is too expensive.
I think we should have as many stakeholders.
Councilors, please, one at a time.
Yeah. I think as many stakeholders, we have people who are interested. I think we need to look at all our options. But we have to also make sure that what we're bringing here and any community center also has resources that people can use and that they're safe and they follow industry standards. We have to, I mean, people have asked for swimming pools. And we have, years ago, when I first came here, I did research of looking through Boston University at the amount of drownings in the city. It was very high. And so, again, we, the Y has an amazing swim program. But the Y is one of many. We can be able to look at other things, but at least we start the conversations and we see what we can, they can offer. And, you know, and I think that that's where you need to begin and...
Well, one more question here. That's it. Just a quick, brief one. I remember when they had the program to send the kids to summer camp, right? And there was money there, right? The Boys and Girls Club was charging four hundred dollars, I remember. And the YMCA was charging sixteen hundred for the same program. So, that's my issue. That's the issue I have with something like that. For sixteen hundred, you could have sent four kids instead of one kid. Instead of one child, you could have sent four. The one, the Boys and Girls Club was charging four hundred. The YMCA was charging fifteen hundred for the same child. So I don't think, I don't think it's fair to...
Well...
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of that exactly, but all I can say to this group as being a participant in my... as being a participant myself in YMCA's for many, many years, there is a major discounts that they can be given. And so, again, I think we have to, as a group, look at all our options and be able to, you know, to then balance them.
Counselor Lopez, you have a question? Counselor DiMoli?
Yes, I have a question. I want to echo what Counselor DeJesus said about the arts manager. I'm so glad that that strategic plan that we worked on so hard is actually coming to fruition, and we can start to address some of the needs that we have in this community. I love the passion that you have for all the activities that you offer. And the last thing that I wanted to say was that when I came on the council eight years ago, I didn't, the youth commission was dormant, and we revived it. And I know that we've been, we've had a hard time with keeping some of the young people on, and they have so many other things to do. I really wish that there was a way, or maybe, maybe I would just want to plant the seed, that we, I would hope that the youth commission takes priority moving forward. There's so many things that they could do. They could work with the city clerk's office and helping with civic engagement. They could be the liaison for promoting city jobs at the high school. There's just so many things. I think that we often look at young people like an issue as opposed to the resource that they are, and it would be, I would really love for the revival of this youth commission not to be in vain. And with everything else that you're doing within your department, I would like to see that come, even if, even if they need a little, like, a little budget or something, or a stipend. I don't know what we need to do, but I just think it's something worth investing in.
And, and it's very timely, because I had a meeting today with Alex DeValle Montoya. He and Abby Feldman are, now Abby's come on board. And they did the last couple of weeks work with the group of looking at goals and objectives to how to jumpstart in a different way next year, and especially trainings that we've talked about. You know, empowerment of youth trainings, and also to be able to be very close to la collaborative, ECO, the different groups out there, that it's not, it's just not, they're in isolation, but they come together. A lot of them, a lot of the youth commission members are also on those groups. And so they really have to look at a way of working together, because there's not competition here. It's, it's the same thing that they're voicing. And, you know, one thing they're all thrilled about is that skate, the skate park. So hopefully that little skate park can, you know, make a difference to, to our children here. So, thank you, and we hear you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, B.
Thank you, B.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
We'll, we're switching gears here to bring HR forward.
Devani?
And HR oversees two main city activities, both running human services and overseeing employee benefits. So we'll be touching on both of those matters today.
Counselors, if you'll turn to page eighty in your book, eight-zero, this is the Human Resources Department Personnel, one fifty-two. On page eighty, you'll see the mission statement outlined, and then continues on with department at a glance, key accomplishments, goals and objectives, expenses. Page eighty-three, the salary line funds for staff members in this department. Right below that, there's a temporary line, the temporary salary line funds temps, that are assigned to various other departments on a temporary basis. The funding comes from here. The operations section is up nine percent with two categories, employee training and professional services. The overall budget is up five point six percent. I'll now turn it to Ed Els, the director of HR, for comments and questions.
Thank you, Ed. Thank you, everyone, for hosting us tonight. Just a few remarks, opening remarks we've been asked to make. My department at a glance, I hope you know a number of them, because I have a great team down the hall here. Denia Romero is our benefits manager. Odelisa Macedo is our HR manager. And Gonzalez, I'm sorry, Millie Gonzalez is my HR recruiter slash generalist. And so it's a super team. At a glance, I think you all know what we do. We're committed to a broad range of HR services and benefits that are designed to employ, develop, and maintain a high-quality workforce. The provision of high-quality municipal services to our residents of our community is directly dependent upon having a qualified and engaged workforce to deliver those municipal services. We work in partnership with managers and their teams, with individual employees, and with others to create a work environment that is conducive to and supports continuous improvement and learning into the operations of city government. The HR department's or my team's values are customer service, continuous improvement, teamwork, and results. In addition, we administer to our employees and their families health and welfare benefit programs, such as health and dental insurance, leave of absence administration, EAP services and support, and the seniors and veterans tax through our program. Ed highlighted some of the changes in my budget from last year. We, in general, took a conservative approach in our HR budget request. Two line items show increases from FY twenty-three, training, which is up sixty-six percent from last year, and health insurance, our health insurance self-insured fund is up five point two six percent from last year. The training line item is consistent with our long-term strategy to deliver broadly, broader, broader soft skill and hard skills training programs to our employees, as well as more bespoke customized training at the request of individual department managers. The five percent increase for insurance trust fund is based upon our current and expected experience and related costs for fiscal year twenty-four, adding in an estimate for new employees in fiscal year twenty-four. Finally, in terms of accomplishments and looking forward to fiscal year twenty-four, we are very pleased with the successful completion of our supervisory training program this past March. This included about thirty supervisors and managers representing all levels of management at City Hall. It had been the first such training in over a decade, and a rare opportunity, a very rare opportunity, actually, for our managers to come together and engage and listen to each other in a supportive learning environment. In fiscal year twenty-four, we look forward to partnering with our DEI officer to implement two to four key recommendations from the recent DEI audit that was conducted. We were the pilot group, because they picked on HR and made us the pilot group, but I think she, some really great ideas were highlighted in her report, and we looked into view and implement two to three of them going forward this year. That's it, Mr. Dunn, thank you.
Yes, so we'll open questions on the second section of employee benefits. We'll talk about after questions on the HR section.
Any questions? Any questions?
I just wanted to say, you guys got a great, you ladies and you guys in that department, very helpful, knowledgeable, and you've got some very good results in your last hires in our city, and glad to see you guys really looking at the Chelsea residents with this city council always act and try to advocate for it. So thank you for all the work you folks do over there. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I'll extend that because, you know, Denia Romero does their onboarding, right? She does it one-to-one. So when you start here in Chelsea City Hall, you're meeting the key benefits person one-to-one, have dedicated time to meet with it. That doesn't happen. Now, I said to her, it's wonderful that you do that, but it's not efficient. And over the next year or so, we have to think of a way to keep the personalization of it, but make it more efficient, make it more efficient. That's our goal going forward.
Odelise?
Yes, I, I just wanted to share, first of all, thank you for your work. Really excited to see the training goals and accomplishments that you are putting forward. My question is more regarding the eighty percent new hires for, with Chelsea residents, right? We, we have seen a lot of waivers recently, and so I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but I do hear that there are concerns about why there are so many waivers, and so this number looks really good. And so I would like for you to share with me, like, break down, how is it that there's eighty percent, but we get many waivers before us?
I think what would be important, I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, but sometimes it's important for you to see who we are hiring without a waiver, you know, because you don't see that, all you see is the waiver ones that come through. And that number, eighty percent, is always somewhat north of eighty percent, like eighty, eighty-three percent, depending upon what roles we were hiring for at the time. But, you know, it is, I know it's a goal of the council to hire Chelsea residents, I get it. But understand from my perspective that it's our goal too. It's easier for us to hire Chelsea residents than it is to go external, to have to do a waiver, to elongate the process, to get them onboard, to sometimes lose them unfortunately because they live elsewhere. It is in our interest as a HR department to hire Chelsea residents. So we're all on the same page, but I welcome ideas in terms of how we can increase that. We're always looking to increase our local agencies that we advertise at, we send over job, Millie Gonzalez is terrific with those job postings. She sends them off to the local agencies that she has in the city of Chelsea. We post things electronically on the city's website, on Facebook, on Indeed. I am open to any suggestions and showing how we increase the pool of applicants, which will help reduce the waivers that are needed to hire onboard the person in the city.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question to that. So could you share with me, where do you see the most challenges in filling in positions, like what departments or what areas with local residents? And what areas do you see most turnaround? Where folks come in and it's a Chelsea resident and we're excited, but then, you know, it gets emptied again and we're in a situation.
Yeah, no, I understand. Our turnover is remarkably decent. It runs about three to four percent of our permanent workforce. So that's, that's a plus right there. Shortly after I started here, a little over a year ago, I had a meeting with Tom in terms of what's his understanding and my understanding of the waiver processes. And he made it clear there were departments that he would probably not issue a waiver for. In other words, in Tom's grace, don't waste your time coming to me with a candidate that's not from Chelsea, particularly for the laborer jobs in DPW, the water sewer drain jobs in DPW, three-one-one, et cetera. So he, level four clerks, entry-level clerk, if you can find someone in Chelsea to do that job. And that's been our guiding principle. Where we struggle the most and probably have the most waivers from is in housing and community development, because of the specific work that they do and the requirements of a lot of the roles. They're looking for master's degrees, they're looking for bachelor's degrees in urban planning, resilience, you know, EA, not EAP, EPA monitoring, EPA compliance, you know, that really sets forth very strict criteria in terms of who can do the job. So we struggle in those areas to keep those people. And they're in demand, too. I mean, they're highly qualified, highly educated. We just lost someone to the Hill administration because of her expertise in the field. So it's kind of tough, but it's always a big challenge for us going, and at the top of our mind in terms of how we operate.
Thank you, and again, thanks for everything that you do.
Thank you. And what I should say is, we were particularly proud this year, because it's not only getting Chelsea residents in entry-level jobs, it's about getting Chelsea residents in mid-level management jobs as well. And we're really happy that we were able to place, as Jeanette was talking about, Jimmy Oregan, who's the elections administrator, and a new assistant city clerk, both from Chelsea, both in mid-level managerial operations. We consider that a win.
You had mentioned level entry clerks here in our city.
It's what? I'm sorry.
Level entry clerks?
Oh, yes.
And that's where you don't have a problem hiring from the city of Chelsea. But how are we helping those level entry clerks get to a higher position here in the city? Is it possible where in the future we can create a pipeline where we're educating our own, where honestly, our school system deprived our children, and six percent go to college? How are we, as a city, are educating our employees at a level entry clerk and not undermining them? They, they might have the ability to learn and eager to learn, but have no way of growing in the city because they didn't have the tools. How, how can we change that?
If we were overstaffed, the city hall would have room for more growth, from a development perspective and a knowledge perspective. None of our offices are overstaffed, right? So when we get an opening, we fill it pretty quickly. We've had a lot of luck with recruiting people from the greeter population, you know, entry-level, again, inter-level work. What they have going for them, if you're in Chelsea City Hall in an administrative or clerical or mid-level management position, you're covered, you're represented by a collective bargaining agreement that allows for step increases under many circumstances. One, if you switch jobs. Two, if you go into a job that requires more skill set, or you now have achieved a higher level of skill set, and you're eligible to, say, go from a grade four step two to a grade five step two and be eligible for the corresponding increase. When you look at city hall, a very common in each department is to have an office manager. All those office managers were at one point the grade four clerk, that through learning and their desire to learn, made their way through their respective union process to gather, to gain more information and knowledge, and use that knowledge to increase your pay. So making more opportunities at work is about, hopefully, having the growth in the employee population that creates the openings where people move into. Because when we have new openings in city hall and people move into them, the union rights prevail. So we can't go externally until we've met or satisfied the union requirements with the internal folks that have already been there. So there are a number of safeguards that are there, and we've been, it's good not to have a lot of turnover, but it's bad in terms of people become sterile in their environment, right? But I hear you, I hear you.
And I would just add to that, that from my recollection, there have been several people who were hired in the greeters positions and then were promoted to different departments throughout the city. So one came from greeters and went over to city clerk's department, and then later to ISD. One came up here to the legislative division and is now in the school department. So there's been some movement. Where it started was in the greeters, greeters category, and then moved through to wherever there were openings once they, they applied.
Calvin, I already asked a question.
So I just have one question. Thank you for the hard work that you do, appreciate it. What is the other consulting services?
Other consulting services? That is, a couple of reports that were mandated due to the Affordable Care Act.
I'm sorry?
The Affordable Care Act. We have technical assistance in creating that report that's filed annually. Arbitration fees come out of that when we're in a dispute with the union. We're the source of the payee. And a jocu sign, which is an internal document process, that's housed in that line item as well.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Thank you. A comment and a question. And the comment is just piggybacking on the waiver topic. There was a waiver that came before us for a position at E nine-one-one, where there was someone that was chosen over, a Chelsea resident that had graduated from Chelsea High, spoke Spanish. And those positions over there have, for a long while, kind of, it's almost like you have to have a specific skill set. But really, it is an entry-level position, and people can learn it. Now, look, I get it, maybe the person didn't interview well, maybe the, whatever, but I just, for me, it's like if I see somebody that's from Chelsea, graduated, he spoke Spanish, and they want to work for us, to me, it's like, our charter says, you know, Chelsea residency is preferred. I'm not in the habit of thinking that I would rather have someone that can do the job better than I care that they're a Chelsea resident, to be honest with you. I've kind of shifted in my ideology a bit. But I just want to make sure that when we're, that, that it's noted that this council does want Chelsea residents to get preference. I respect what you do, I can't do what you do, I'm sure you made the right decision, but I'm just speaking on what I know in the waiver that came before me. That's my comment. My question is, I want to, you said implement two to four key recommendation of the recent DEI, the audit. I guess I don't know what that means. Like, I get it, there's some information that will come from that, some data, and I guess what I really want to know is, when we had the DEI, Dr. Candace Perez here yesterday, and we all spoke, I think that we were all kind of in agreement, in what capacity should the DEI department be working with the human resources? Because to me, it seems almost like a non, it's obvious that there should be more of a collaboration there. I'm curious in your perspective as the director of human resources, how do you see yourself working in, with DEI? In what capacity do you see maybe evolving that department a little bit more with DEI?
Yeah, I see it as a, I joked with Candace a couple of weeks ago, it's a bit like partners in crime. And that's, you know, we deal with similar types of issues in what we're dealing with. She's, a lot of the work she will do is to promote engagement. I would love to improve engagement on my side, but we came to those conclusions separately, right? This is where, so we could be of great use to each other when we combine forces. That's why when I looked at the goals for next year, I said, if I don't put in the goal today, it's not going to get done. So we got to say we're going to implement two to four recommendations that her audit did, when she did that audit at City Hall and brought the results back to HR. It's all from an engagement perspective, from an onboarding perspective, from a training perspective, that keeps coming back and hits us. So we know what the concerns are of people that met with her. Now it's trying to develop some programs that'll help alleviate that. Now it's trying to develop some programs that'll help alleviate that.
So you see that relationship kind of coming together at some point a little closer?
Yeah. Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Beautiful. I appreciate your department. Everybody's always super responsible over there. Thank you for what you do. I don't have any other questions.
I have a couple of questions. Earlier, my fellow counselor said that eighty percent are Chelsea residents, but in reality, it's not eighty percent. And there's a catch to that, too, that the people should know. When you apply for a Chelsea resident, the only thing you have to do is you only have to live in Chelsea when you apply, and then you don't have to live in Chelsea anymore. That's one thing that I know, it's a fact, that you only have to, at the time you're there, you apply, say, I live in Chelsea. And after, you don't have to live in Chelsea, and you can still get Chelsea preference. That's one. The next one is, on your department, there's a nine one one, there's a requirement that they have to live here ten years, but if there's no, on your application, it does not say that a requirement is that you have to live here ten years and it could be waived by the city manager. Why didn't you put that inside of that application? That people should know that you have to live here ten years. It was done in two thousand twenty-one. So why isn't that on your application?
Right. I'm not too familiar about that aspect of our residency requirement. But in general, I hear where you're coming from, but my professional recommendation would be not to include anything on an application that may entice someone not to apply. I would rather an unqualified person apply and I'll screen them out of the process than to have someone who thinks, because we have two types of people that apply for jobs. People that see a bachelor's is required and they have an associate's at high school and they apply anyhow, right? Or we have people who say, oh, no, I didn't go to college, I won't be able to apply, where in reality, we'll accept substitute, you know, substitute work experience towards the associate's degree. So in general, anything that looks like it would restrict potentially someone from applying based upon their own judgment, I'd stay away from. So someone would see that if that were true and say, oh, I don't live here for ten years, I'm going to not apply, because it won't apply to me, it's a waste of time.
Oh, and something else, too. I got complaints from some people, they say they apply and never got interviews. Says they apply, Chelsea residents, and never got interviewed. They just got skipped right over. So if your priority and the city's priority is to hire Chelsea residents, why do they skip them? Why do they just, don't even give them an interview? I thought the procedure was to give them interviews.
If, what I can tell you is it's, it is true that everyone who applies does not get an interview. There's too many, the volume is too much. For the city clerk, assistant city clerk, we've got a hundred and fifty resumes. A lot of them are Chelsea residents, no one had, no one had experience as assistant city clerk. So when people apply to a job, they get an auto-generated reply that says, thank you for your application. If we think you are further mentioned, we will contact you. So that's one policy. And we test that occasion to make sure that's still there. Then there's those people that we do interview. And anyone who interviews in my team knows, once we place the candidate, whoever won, whoever got the job, we give phone calls or emails to the people that were interviewed, who had a face-to-face interview, just because it's a little one step closer in intimacy to make sure that those that took the time. Because if you get invited to an interview in my office, we think there's something there in terms of a skill set. And if not for this world that they're interviewing for, maybe one that's coming down the road.
But the part that I don't understand is this, Mr. Els. If somebody applies to you for your job, right? Common courtesy should say, okay, we're not going to interview you. At least let someone know that you're not interviewing them or that they just, a lot of people complained to me, told me that they apply and never received a word, never gave them an opportunity, never, that's kind of an unusual procedure that you just, someone applies, you could at least say to them, okay, we're not gonna, whatever, whatever you decide, let them know. They don't even know. Later on, they find out, oh, that person got hired. Well, what happened to me? Come, I didn't get anything. That is bad procedure to me. If I was applying for your job and you skipped me and didn't even tell me why you skipped me, or you didn't even give me an interview, I would be very upset. So why does that procedure goes in your department? Why do you do that?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, he.
No, I know.
But, Mr. Chairman, he said that everybody gets a thing, say, an email. We got it, if you're a candidate, then we'll interview you. Just for the sake of time, I think you made your point.
We ain't got too much time, but that was the question I wanted to get, exactly to the point, that people shouldn't be skipped. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a reply already. When they receive your application, we receive.
Not all of everybody, because I know people that apply and never got a reply.
Mr. Chairman, can we move on?
I understand, I understand.
Can you tell them what I said?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Els.
No, I'm sorry, there's one more division that Mr. Els is responsible for, that's the employee benefits. So if we could turn, direct your attention to page two thirty-three. Page two three three in the book. And you'll notice that there are benefits that are listed in the chart, health insurance, life insurance, Medicare, unemployment, and workers' compensation. I'll highlight two of these, and Ed can comment further if there are questions. So the first is on the health insurance. The health insurance is seven point eight million dollars. This represents about eight percent of the city budget. So earlier tonight, we talked to the fire department and last night, the police department. So those two combined are about twenty-five percent of the budget. This health insurance number is about eight percent of the budget. The second item, the Medicare, the Medicare represents the city's obligation to match all employees' Medicare payroll deduction at one point four five percent. So that number is driven by the number of employees that we have and the requirement to deduct the one point four five percent Medicare obligation. So that's not anything that we can control. It's about what we have to do for compliance on Medicare tax.
Questions, Ms. Malalies? Question, Mr. Taylor? Question, Mr. Lopez? No question from me either.
Thank you. Thank you all. And just a parting comment, and this happens, this is an invitation to each of you. When you get those situations and someone says, I was mistreated at H R, or I didn't get an interview, I want to know why, I'd be more than happy in that situation to talk to the person and see where we fit. So that's, let's put that offer out there. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
I'll invite the health department. If you'll, public health is one of the divisions of H H S, and if you turn to page two oh four, you'll see that. See the details.
Okay. So page two zero four in the book. And this starts with health officer, the mission statement is on two oh four. On page two oh seven, a few pages up, the regular salaries are up about five percent. This department has funding for two positions. You'll notice those on the page that follows. The operating expenses are up just over twenty percent, and the total budget is up fifteen point six. Director Flora Meyer is here, and she can make comments and answer questions.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Flora Meyer, Director of Public Health, one of the newest divisions in the H H S department. The division focuses on protecting and promoting the overall health and wellness of our residents through prevention monitoring and response and reporting of communicable diseases, as well as leveraging a lot of our partnerships and relationships with medical providers to promote and bridge access to health services. In addition, we collaborate extensively with inner city departments to expand and continue promoting public health in the city. As reflected in the budget, some of the key changes that you will see is increases in some of our contracts with our navigator services, as well as increases in conference expense lines and advertisements. Given the, I guess, how young public health is, to us is really important to promote ongoing education and learning and exploring through other communities and also by attending additional conferences and professional settings to see what we can learn and bring back to the community. So that's part of the reason why our conference line expense has increased. Similarly, advertising for public health has gone up. We've realized that oftentimes, a lot of modes of communication are through print material and also direct outreach to our community members, and having information to present to them is really important as we're making communications on any public health notices. Regarding goals and accomplishments for this year, I think, you know, we're still really proud of how we continuously manage COVID during the winter seasonal spikes that we had last year. In addition, one of my other proud accomplishments is the collaboration that we had with fire, police, and emergency response to develop and spearhead a special needs registry, which we hope to launch pretty soon. So I think the department in general, we're trying to pivot and move beyond COVID and address a lot of the sequelae and the challenges that were left behind. And one of the main focuses is that ongoing communication with our community on conditions outside of COVID, because we recognize that there was a lot of disinterest, especially now, later on. So how do we re-engage our community members to understand that paying attention to other health trends is important? But furthermore, it is also important for us to continue the trust-building and the collaborative efforts with our C B Os that we developed during COVID in order to address other public health conditions related to chronic health here in the city and to also advance in emergency preparedness.
Any questions on the left? Tenary?
Thank you.
Questions, please?
Yes, thank you so much, Flor, for your work. My question is regarding collaboration, in particular with Inspection Service Department, D P W, any department that connects with code violations. We see a lot of code violation concerns, and so how are we bridging that gap between the impacts from those code violations to our residents' health?
I think that's a really good question, and it is something that we are actively, I think, trying to address. It is a massive undertaking. As you all know, the housing stock of the city potentially has not necessarily been updated. In addition to that, our living conditions, especially with crowded housing, I think, impacts our overall housing conditions of our residents. And so within the city and I S D, and also outside of city departments, we're working or I'm trying to understand how we can make an impact and what those steps would be. For my own personal, I think, growth right now, I'm in this space of a lot of exploration, a lot of investigation, a lot of understanding how other departments work, and a lot of collection of information to then better create a framework that will lead to a result or a positive outcome. I think, given how pervasive the problem is, it will take time to fully address it, and it will take not just departments, but organizations and resident engagement. And as you mentioned, D P W as well, to really address this problem in a holistic way.
I have a question about your youth. Sorry, Flor. Thank you for all you do. But I have a question about our youth substance, youth prevention regional manager. What outreach has he, is he involved in any way with the schools? What outreach is he doing with organizations that have youth like La Glorativa, like ECO in Greenwood, Roca with Teen Moms? How is he collaborating with, are you?
Is this in reference to Ryan Berry's position? Yes. So Ryan Berry does engage with the school. He also works with Yasmin Hung, who leads a teen action project, and they spearhead a lot of mental and health wellness initiatives over at the high school. They are out of Healthy Chelsea, Healthy Chelsea. So we are the fiscal agent, Healthy Chelsea. Jim Kelly is his direct supervisor and navigates and I think provides guidance on outreach. If, I think, they are more than willing, and of course, I'm more than willing, to take feedback and recognize gaps perhaps and areas for growth and areas for ongoing outreach, if that is something that may not necessarily be happening at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Counselor Taylor?
I just want to thank you for the job that you're doing. I don't really have any budgetary questions here. You answered the contract services thing with the navigators. That was the only question I had, so thank you very much.
Okay, sorry. So I might have not heard you correctly. Do you have a question around the navigators?
No, no, I said you answered it. You answered the question I was going to ask in your opening statement, so.
Okay.
Thank you. It's all good.
Conferences, this is a hundred percent. What does that mean, conference? That's you go on conferences?
No, that is us, either myself or the public health nurse, attending local conferences that are coordinated by professional, so for example, the Mass Health Officers Health Association or other public health-specific conferences.
Thank you.
Counselor D'Malley?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for you do, for what you do.
I have a couple of questions. Since the pandemic has slowed down, what kinds of things are you focusing in on?
So one of the main projects that I'm focusing on right now, it's the childhood immunization program. The Department of Public Health or the Division of Public Health just recently applied to the state to become a pediatric vaccination provider. So what we've noticed is that because of the pandemic and the mass exodus of a lot of public health, sorry, medical providers from our hospital systems, a lot of our students are not up to date in their childhood immunizations. Furthermore, we, Chelsea as an immigrant community, constantly has new arrivals who may not be able to receive an appointment to get vaccines at a hospital. By us being able to provide vaccines here at the health department, we're able to then serve as a relief valve for the hospital systems and also allow for students to start schools immediately, since Chelsea requires full immunizations before students can start school. And that is especially, I think, beneficial for newcomers, as parents may not have a support system to be able to go to work and have their kids stay home. So having kids start home, sorry, school immediately is really important. The other initiative that we're working on, as I mentioned, is the launching of the special needs registry, and that is in collaboration with our police, fire, and emergency management. We are hoping that by having a registry where we can efficiently identify Chelsea residents who live outside of congregant spaces, who may have, whether it is cognitive, physical, or electric medical needs, we're able to better respond in case of an emergency. This really surfaced from our inability to readily identify homebound individuals during the vaccination efforts. We had to rely on hospitals, elder services, and multiple. We had to rely on hospitals, elder services and multiple data systems in order to compile a list of sixty Chelsea homebound individuals. So that took a lot of effort. The special needs registry is going to be voluntary. We do hope that there is buy-in from the community, from our members, since it is really an attempt to better respond to their needs in the event of an emergency and have what's necessary to better serve them.
Where will these shots be taken for the kids?
For the kids, they will be out of the ground floor, right next to our office.
How are they going to have any privacy if they're going to be down?
So a lot of times with childhood immunization, similarly to how you experienced during the flu vaccine, it's really just on the arm. We here are able to provide privacy to our city employees by just having screens. So we're working with DPW to create a curtain that we will be able to then close off and have the privacy for the children as they come in. And it'll be appointment-based, and again, we're going to start, the idea is to pilot and trial this one time a month with the opportunity to increase it to weekly.
And what are our outside contracts that we have with other organizations?
So we have the contracts with North Suffolk Mental Health, and they are the ones who provide the navigator services. They are Tim and Jason, who will do the check-ins with a lot of our residents suffering from substance use disorders. Over the last three months, they were able to serve, I believe, close to one hundred and twenty individuals. They enrolled thirty-six new members into the program. They were able to provide detox beds to approximately, let me see, I have the numbers here, I believe, ten people over the course of the last three months. And then the other one is through our Capic, and they are the ones who provide wraparound services such as taxi vouchers when people need to get to these detox centers and don't have motor transportation. Capic is also the one who manages the Luz de Cristo Resource Center where people can come in for a hot meal, shower. And then other part of that contract is for our Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Chelsea is one of the members with Revere and Winthrop, and we formed the North Suffolk Public Health Collaborative. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council assists us with a lot of grant writing, and through their support, we've been able to have an epidemiologist as well as a regional public health nurse, and we're also exploring other shared services agreement to augment and support public health initiatives.
The, just a question going back to the grant funding. Didn't we get a grant for a full-time health worker? And I see we're only use, he's only working part-time here?
So we have two grants from the state. One was a vaccine equity initiative grant, which will expire at the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth, and that's how we were able to provide staffing at the senior center clinic. The community health worker grant was in fact awarded, however, it has taken, surprisingly, two years to execute the subcontract agreement with our fiscal agent, which is MGH. And so right now, what we have is an allocation that we do have to spend by the end of this fiscal year. I'm still waiting for the year three contract before I can bring on a community health worker for a full year. So with the money that we have for year two, since we have really only two months to spend it, I am working with B. Cravata and our Recreation and Cultural Department to offer YMCA memberships to Chelsea families for a year. Communication went out through the Recreation List Serve as well as text messages that were sent to members and people who.
And we can use the grant money in that manner? Wasn't it set up for a worker?
Yes, that is something that, so this grant was among many other collaboratives. So Cambridge Health Alliance and Revere received the community health worker grant. They faced similar challenges in being able to execute the grant in a timely manner, and they were able to create a pipeline where Cambridge Health Alliance providers were able to refer patients to Cambridge Health Alliance and receive YMCA memberships. So essentially, we are trying to replicate what our partners in Cambridge have been able to use with that money since we only executed this contract in April, and it was very, a short turnaround time to be able to hire someone full-time without having security for year three funding.
Kind of doesn't really answer my question, but I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Flor. Thanks for waiting.
Elder Affairs. Tracy Nowicki, good evening.
Good, Tracy, how are you?
If you'll, if you'll turn to page two oh nine, you'll see the update report on Chelsea Elder Affairs.
So you'll turn to page two twelve, a few pages past the introductory pages, and you'll see the regular salaries are up three point eight one percent, which is standard for increases that are contractual. The contract services line is increasing due to a new funding for daily transportation, and Tracy can get into that in a few minutes. The cleaning and custodial supplies is also up twenty-five hundred. That is due to cost and quantity increases for the cleaning supplies. Overall, the budget is up thirty-two, almost thirty-three percent, but this is mostly operations-driven, not salary-driven. So Tracy Nowicki will answer any questions and make a statement if she'd like.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tracy Nowicki, Director of Elder Services for the City of Chelsea. At a glance, our department provides health and wellness services for the residents of Chelsea that are focusing on fifty and over to provide, to help assist those in the community to live independently, longer, vigorously, to stay active in the community, to reduce isolation and to help improve mental health for those, especially in the older age group, for sixty-five and older. So those tasks and programs are met with and provided through partnerships in the community and in city government to help us be able to accomplish the goal, which has been going very well. With that, and for us to be able to continue to service those older adults in the community, the transportation is a big, big factor in that. So we found that more people are engaging at the senior center due to the transportation. So we are able to reduce depression and isolation through the transportation. More engagement at the senior center to participate in the wonderful programs that we have there, exercise programs. We're also, so the focus has been on mental health. So we are introducing new programs surrounding the improvement of mental health, which is an art therapy program, which is also providing two days a week, a social worker for talk therapy. It's non-clinical, but then the partnerships are really important in the community, which help us to succeed. Those partnerships include North Shore Community Services, the Mystic Valley Elder Services to provide meals on wheels delivered to their homes, caseworkers to the homes, helping seniors who can't get out to help clean their homes, go grocery shopping, things like that. So the programs we offer are significant, they're working, and the team I have at the senior center is impeccable.
Questions on the left?
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you for all that you do. I see the festivities and the events, and I'm just, I'm looking forward to being part of the senior center when I get to that age.
Me too.
My question is related to two things I would like to know from you. What, are you seeing an increase in housing needs, homelessness within this population?
Yes.
Okay. And how are you, are you facing challenges with rehousing this population, or are you able to access resources, either internally or externally?
So the resources that we utilize have been great. I don't find it a challenge to access the resources. I think the challenge is with, so with being able, for me, is the time it takes to be able to, and I know that there are different obstacles and, you know, sometimes you can't avoid, but I would say that would be the biggest challenge in terms of, we don't get a, we don't see a lot of homelessness come to the center, thank God, but we have had a few, a handful or more, that we were able to work with the community partners and succeed in getting those that were homeless placed and stabilize housing for them. The challenge is the mental health portion of it that I find correlates with the homelessness. So a lot, the challenge is that when we do offer programs or resources or referrals, because of the mental health, it prevents them from accepting the service. So what we do at the senior center, it was, the big, important, main factor is developing the relationships that we have with the people that come in because then we build trust. So that if we're talking, especially somebody who's, has a cognitive decline, it's a trust factor. So we were able to place, I want to say, four people within a year and a half span because of the trust that we were able to build. So they were comfortable, and then we're able to move on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tracy, for being here, and thank you for your service. Thank you for your service for what you do for our most vulnerable population. Just one really big question is, actually two. One is, what's the hour of transportation? I know you say you have the day transportation service, and if you can tell me about any of the activities that are people coming back to the seniors, that remember they used to have the ice cream socials, the dances. Do you see a population growth there yet?
Yes, every day. So the transportation is daily. Two days a week, it's full day. Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's not full day. It's Thursdays is eight to one or two, Mondays, nine to one, and Wednesdays, I believe, nine to one. It's being utilized quite a bit. We have about four hundred and thirty-nine members of the shuttle service actively using the shuttle services, about two hundred and, three hundred and fifty on a regular basis. That grows, so I check in with our agency that we contract with quarterly, and so this was last quarter. So I'll check in in about another month to see where we're at with growth. With regard to the programs, people are coming back. You know, it's an ebb and flow at the senior center. It's seasonal sometimes, I think, because people go away a lot. So for whatever reason, the weather, but now that it's nice and the weather is great, we're seeing a lot of activity. So it's really, it's really great. We're seeing a lot of new participants from other communities. We've always had that, but it seems like there's a little uptick in that. I don't ask why, I just welcome. And so I get the feeling that those that are not from Chelsea but feel comfortable in the atmosphere at the senior center because they're able to come in and engage with the Latino culture. So that's really great, and you know, that's always a top priority, and we encourage the cultural aspect of the senior center, and so that's wonderful. So yeah, so, and then again, I have to point out with a new program and a partnership that I've, you know, this has been years in the making, but with the Jordan Boys and Girls Club, we were able to offer, and with the help of the city, offer an aqua, new aqua aerobics program. So the pool has been useful, and so we have forty participants in that aqua aerobics program. So it's great, and it's also an intergenerational participation or collaboration. So the kids, although they're not there, some funnel through, will peek in, so it's pretty neat.
Now, is that program that you just spoke of?
Yeah.
For the seniors?
For the seniors.
For the seniors, now how do we get transportation? Is it through the bus?
Through our shuttle service.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so we, so some, so what we found easy to be is that everyone meets at the senior center as a group, and we all go together.
Nice.
Yeah, it's really good.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Taylor?
So he stole one of my questions about the, that, I know we wanted to continue to fund that shuttle because that's a big, that's a big thing for the folks, and I think it's probably really worth the money to do it, so I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
I just had one, unless I missed it somewhere. What is the eighty thousand dollar under contract services cover? That's the big item on the budget here.
That's the transportation?
That is that?
That is the transportation.
That's the extra money. So, yeah, all right. So that's basically all I had. Thank you for doing such a great job with the folks.
You're welcome.
I mean, it's, you know, in general, I think the city does a pretty good job all the way around. I mean, we have, nobody's perfect, and we got things to, but I mean, it really goes a long way, I think, when we have departments that do their job and really, really do something for the people, you know, and it's, it's great. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Todd, I have to just echo that. That is significant, and so for, for city departments to work together and collaborate for the, for the common goal, right, is to provide really great quality services to the residents of the community is a focus that, that's always, I'm always aiming and working at, at improving or solidifying DPW, significant work for the, for our senior center, you know, and other community agencies, so the partnerships, but especially when, you know, when you have your departments together working collectively, that's so signi, that's great.
You know, I have a hospitality background. So that's kind of comes to the customer service aspect of, of things, I think, is important because everyday people, you know, they don't care about a lot of this stuff. They just, they need help.
Yeah.
Getting through the day or getting help with whatever task they have to be involved with the city for. So I do, I do appreciate.
I agree.
Your, your hard work.
Thank you.
Counselor Cooperall?
I only have one question. Are you hired an outreach program coordinator? How's that working out?
He's fantastic.
What does he do?
He coordinates and develops new programs or the programs that are existing, he manages. He's outreach in the community to promote the Chelsea Senior Center. You know, we were talking about city, and I don't want to move too far off, but he's an example that I'm proud of, that he's, he's a city resident and he's young. That he's a, he's a city resident and he's young, right? And so he's not, he's not necessarily, he didn't come in with the qualifications for, for that particular position. But his personality was what stood out to me. So I had some people with master's degrees, right, in the area of gerontology. So when you interview them, you kind of get a feel of how they would work out. And not only because Mike, Michael de Jesus is a Chelsea resident, but his personality is what struck me. And so I was happy to recommend him as the hire and he's working out fantastic because of his personality. He's willing to do the work, he's willing to try new things, he's willing to explore, he engages in, in, in the members. It's, it's excellent, I have a great team.
Counselor Lopez?
I want, I want to congratulate you what, what you, what you did with uh the Jesus, right, that's his name? Giving him the opportunity.
Yeah.
And that's what we've been talking about, give an opportunity to people from Chelsea. And my question is uh, like Counselor Taylor said, he stole my, my question about uh transportation. Can you remind me uh, who were you using for the contract service? And why it went up to eighty thousand dollars more?
Yeah, so, so, so the vendor name is H, H B S S? Transportation, how, how we come, so we, we, we want to, we went out to bid uh for the service, right?
Yeah, we competitively bid the uh, the service. And uh, we, I think for the, I think the hourly cost of this service is about fifty-five dollars an hour. We couldn't, we couldn't provide that service in house.
No.
That cost. And they have a, a premier tracking uh system for who they're picking up, how many people they're picking up uh and transporting, and they report it back to us on a daily basis. The, I think I'm, we're quite, we're, we're very pleased with the service and we think it's a value.
We're very happy with the service and the, and the drivers are very, very respectful and kind and really go above and beyond. And, and again, as you know Ned mentioned, it, it's a constant check-in. And they also want to ensure that they're providing the service to those with wheelchairs. So it's spes-, it's very specific and geared toward the rider, which is what I really was impressed with. So they want to know whose wheelchair, so everybody's, and they'll send a specific van and so um, they were, they've been wonderful.
The cost increased mainly because we increased the number of hours. The demand was there. So, so we had, we had, we increased by about a third, the number of hours that we were buying from them every week. And it, it, it costs money, but for, value for our service, I think we're getting it.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Weenow?
Yeah, unlike Counselor the Jesus, I'm not looking forward to go to the Senior Center because I just realized I'm like four years away.
You would love it.
I want to uh just, um, this is probably my last budget meeting and I'm so excited, and so all I have here, just want to tell you how amazing it's been just being a part of the Senior Center when I was volunteering over there and being able to see up close the way that so many different groups could go there, find community there and flourish. And, and see, just seeing it all play out is just amazing. And in terms of um the increase in the budget for the transportation, you had me when you started talking about mental health and that people are not isolating. After the pandemic, things have been absolutely brutal for everyone across the board, but specifically our youth and our elders. So I, I, it's definitely money and that's, I, I think at the end of the day that you can't even, you can't put a dollar amount on
Thank you.
what we're actually bringing. So thank you for everything that you've done and it's been an honor working with you all these years.
Likewise.
How is the garden coming?
So that's another partnership, um, the garden, our garden's coming along well. We're actually, I wanted to just also mention something very, so there's, we talk about the accomplishments and I'm thinking, I had, I feel like I have so many angles, um, but significantly, we're, we're transforming, forming the Senior Center a little bit. So we're, we're renovating an area in the space to um, to, to transform it into a cafe. So yeah, that's going to be really cool. And then our rooftop garden is going to be transformed into a, what I like to call a, a, a garden oasis. So that it allow our members, we're also having lunch every day as well. So it'd allow them to kind of have a place like a sanctuary. So we, it, it's gardening, it's flowers, beautiful flowers everywhere. We're, we're waiting for something like a pergola to be installed so that they can, you know, there's some diffused lighting so that they can sit out there and just sit and kind of, you know, unwind and relax and it's coming along great. And Green Roots and the public library is helping us with that effort. Yeah.
And the Bauchi startup?
The Bauchi started, we have forty-eight participants. And again, the partnership, I have to keep stressing that because B Cravata is also, we're partnering again with the library too in programming for the seniors and the art. The art therapy class is with B, the gardening is the help of the library, and then the Bauchi tournament at the end of the year is partnering with B Cravata. So those are key, and it's, it's, it's going off well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good, thank you everybody.
Thank you Tracy.
Francisco, please, Francisco Toro, Veterans Agent, Director of Veterans Affairs, uh is up next and it's on page two fourteen.
So page two fourteen starts with the Veterans Mission Statement. And the following page is the Department at a Glance and Key Accomplishments. And then page two sixteen starts with the Goals and the Expense Detail. This department, it consists of one and a half positions, one for Francisco and a half position for his Assistant Veterans Agent. The salaries are down, I believe that's because the twenty-three salary might have been too high because I couldn't find any other reason why in this year's budget it, it should be any different. So I believe that's because the twenty-three number was more than it needed to be for the two individuals that are here. If you look at the, the operations lines, there are two, Contract Services and Community Events that have increases. The Veterans Food Delivery Service is a new service that is being funded, or proposed funded out of the Contract Services line. And the sixty-five hundred increase in Community Events is to fund uh more of the events surrounding Memorial Day and Veterans Day. That was one of the requests from Counsel in the past. The um page two seventeen shows the personnel listing with the one and a half positions. And so overall, the department budget is, is up minimally one point seven-two percent. So Francisco Toro, uh I'll turn it over to him for any comments he'd like to make and any questions.
Hi, uh, well, Francisco Toro, I'm the Veteran Service Officer for the city. And the purpose of the office has always been to be the city's hub for veterans information. We don't do it all, but we're kind of expected to know it all. Um, and, and direct people to the appropriate services, whether it's mental health, medical, prosthetics, uh tax abatements, excise tax, you know, home repairs, homelessness, uh food programs, there, there's, there's really nothing. Burials, there, there's very limited uh items that don't really cross, you know, our, our paths. Education is another one. And through those referrals and services, while the department itself um doesn't provide them all, we, we, we try to be as knowledgeable as we can so that we're effective, an effective resource for the veterans in the community. And even though um state veterans benefits is administered locally, it's actually a state program. So the department is currently assisting uh four hundred and seventy veterans and their family members in the community at various levels. The most significant changes this year for the apartment would be the addition of staff, of course. The, you know, while only uh being part-time about nineteen hours, the addition of staff has been vital in, in improving our client services, specifically in document gathering, which has been increasingly more difficult due to various changes, um improving our food program. So we've grown from the eighties um to about a hundred and fifty-three clients that are currently participating. And, and that's largely in due to the effort of, you know, our staff and assisting, and the staff member also assists with specialist uh events and administrative duties. One of the other things that I would say, we were able to really give a little bit of structure to the Veterans Relief Fund and how it's used. So we've been able to uh provide two uh COLA payments to help our veterans uh with increasing costs. So we did that in the November, December time of the year and we just sent out a payment this week to help people with increases in, in expenses and food uh and, and the like. Finally, one of the last um programs that we're able to, to fit in, we were, we were getting a lot of requests for missing markers um at the cemetery. Some, so we were able to identify nineteen families that uh veterans uh need markers for. So we were able to work with uh Woodland Staff to get a plot map and, and isolate uh names and, and we're in the process right now of uh doing the paperwork. Nineteen applications to the federal government for deliveries of, of these headstones.
Thank you. Questions on the left? Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I um, I was wondering about the new food delivery uh system. You know, I had the pleasure of coming and helping with the uh, with the kind of bagging up all the food stuff for, for the veterans when they come in. Can you just, was there enough, there was enough uh, uh demand for people wanting it delivered or people that couldn't come in to get the food or how does that, how does that work?
The Senior Center does it a little bit differently than we do, but we also get a different product than they do. Most of our products are fresh, like meats, eggs, dairy. So according to the uh, the guidelines, we need to get it out within a certain window. And, and because of that, there, there are some, some inherent challenges. So when you give sometimes a, a, a disabled veteran or, or an elder veteran a bag that weighs, you know, thirty pounds or twenty to thirty pounds and you give them two bags, it's, it's sometimes it's tough for them to get on the bus and train, or, or the bus to, to, to get to where they need to get to. So by having the delivery services to the door, it really has sparked a lot of interest for many of our, our senior or disabled.
And how, and how many, how many vets does that program service?
Uh, it's a hundred and fifty-three deliveries and I believe altogether that impacts about twenty, two hundred and twenty family members.
Very good. And uh my other question is just are, are we, are we still on for planting the flags uh in the square, in the square this year?
Yeah, on Thursday, five P M, you know, um all are welcome. We have the uh Boys and Girls Club uh youth group coming out. And then Roya Vianetta, um, he's put together a nice group of, of volunteers.
Thank you.
Counselor Cooperal?
I got a couple of questions. What is food insurance?
Food insurance, it's, it's kind of like when we sat down and we looked at what an individual basically spends on food and, and we looked at the food increases. So we're part of it, we use the, the V R F to send out those COLA payments. So let's say for example, a, a single veteran spends eighteen hundred a year in, in, you know, uh food expenses. We, probably each bag is worth maybe a hundred dollars uh of food. Just the eggs alone are, are, are quite pricey. So, you know, multiply that by twelve, that's twelve hundred. And then we sent out about six hundred this year in, in payments to the V R F, so that's about eighteen hundred.
So eighteen hundred dollars?
Four hundred. So we send out about eighteen hundred in support uh on, on an annual basis. So I misspoke about what it actually costs, but, so it's a little bit more.
You deliver it?
Um, we use the same company, H B S S.
Okay, and another question I have is increased support counseling for military families. So do you contact our veterans and ask them if they need services?
We, in, in the food bags themselves, we, we always put in the, the V R F flyer. We put in um a list of the dates that they should know that are upcoming for the event. And um, we, we do have like an email list, social media, we use, it's a little bit of everything.
So how many do you actually contact all the time? What is your normal amount?
Probably about two hundred a month.
Two hundred a month? The, the majority of them, where they come from the soldier's home or from the city itself?
From the city itself.
And another question I have for you is, Community Events, it increased a hundred and fifty-four percent. So what is, what, what are you doing that increased a hundred and fifty-four percent?
Uh, most of that is the food because every, everything else is pretty much a city expense. The, the school department is great on bringing out the band, um bringing out, you know, that whole program. The, the music director out there does a great job, but that's not an expense to us. D P W does a great job setting up, uh Mattio is always out there, probably two, three hours before the event. You know, none of that costs anything, it's just the food, the change in food.
So that, that, that includes all the events that you're going to do, like the twenty-ninth? Well, is that, that's what it is, right?
Correct.
That encompassed that, that?
Yeah, everything except the.
Is that a sufficient amount? Or do you need more to make it even more? Because I got complaints sometimes from people that there wasn't enough and there wasn't enough water to drink or there wasn't enough food, so.
We looked at that and we, we think at this point uh it's sufficiently funded, it's over a hundred percent increase. So it was forty-two hundred last year, and so we've brought it up to ten thousand seven. We'll, we'll see how it goes, but I, I think that's more than doubling the, the existing amount.
There shouldn't be any complaints with the amount of food and the amount of water, the amount of things, because it doubled, right?
Yeah, more than doubled, yeah.
So we'll see how that works, I hope it works out good and, you know, it'll be a good thing for the veterans.
Yeah, I mean, uh Memorial Day is coming up, so you'll be able to tell uh pretty quickly.
And the last question I have is, in our city, the veterans don't, don't contact you. They, how do you know which ones are actually in our city or, you know, that don't contact you? How do they get a hold? Let's say this, I know many veterans, they don't come to you. The younger generation of veterans don't go to you, they.
Well, we, 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 we actually, any new veteran that comes into the community, anybody who's recently discharged, like you said, the young veteran, I probably. I've probably talked to about, in the last two months, about twenty-five new young veterans that are probably under the age of thirty. And what happens is the Department of Defense sends a list to the Department of Veteran Services. So let's say, for example, uh, when they're discharged on their D D two fourteen, it says Home of Record, Massachusetts. That, then the D O D will automatically send that referral to the Department of Veteran Services. And then the Department of Veteran Services breaks that down by city. So I've probably gotten six referral slips with anything from two to five veterans on each one. And it's my responsibility to reach out to each and every one and give them an opportunity to come in. I've had veterans who flat out say, I don't need anything, but I'll keep your number and and I'll let you know. And, you know, sometimes I find out two months later, they move to Boston. So then, you know, I I I tell them, well, Boston has veteran services out there too. Um, and then sometimes they come in and they sit down and they talk to me for two hours. It it's a little bit of of everything.
So the question I have is a, is our city increasing with veterans or is it decreasing?
I would say that we're probably decreasing with veterans who are. Are qualified for uh like Chapter one fifteen because they're aging and and they're passing. But we're increasing in younger veterans, but those younger veterans don't typically get on Chapter one fifteen. Because they have school money, they have savings, they just came back. Um, from an environment where they really couldn't spend too much. Um, they have a spouse, they have children, um, it's a whole different dynamic when you're dealing with younger.
So there's not a need?
Not that particular need, not Chapter one fifteen.
All right, then, one more question, Mr. Robinson, then I'm gonna quit. Here's a, here's a simple question for you. If a veteran comes to you and he wants to know how to get services, particularly, let's say, he wants to get benefits or he wants to go to school. What do you do? What, do you guide them or do you fill application for them if they don't know how to fill it? What is the process when they come to you? What do you actually advise them or do you show them how to fill the forms? Uh, uh, what do you do in that sense if I, they come to you and ask for that kind of service?
The, the services are so varied and each agency has their own requirements, so it would depend. Um, I've had veterans just show me their cellphone, look, I already did this, I already did that. They, and they're tech savvy, these are usually the younger veterans. With the older veterans, we'll fill out paperwork if it looks like, um, there's a need. But when you have four hundred plus veterans, you 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 just, you you approach each situation, uh, you know, case by case. So if it looks like they they need it and and you ask them, you know, um, often they offer and they say, oh, I can do it. I can go down there, I can resolve it, that's no issue, they'll show me their phone that they've already done it. Um, they'll come in with printouts that they've already done it. Uh, but sometimes you do need to be more involved in in helping them fill out the paperwork.
That's a question, so if somebody actually comes to you and wants you to get involved, you do get involved and try to, if they don't know how to do it, you do it for them?
Sometimes I'll, I'll even write the the letter for them and I'll have them read it. You like it, sign it, if you want me to change it, I'll change it. And that was just this past week.
Then I have no more question for you.
Thank you. Councilor Lopez?
Uh, can you explain me on the contract service, went from zero to, to up, went up. Um, can you explain me that contract, that that mean that you didn't have that contract before?
That's for the food delivery service, that that's what is funded in that line, did, did you wanna know more about that?
That's for the, the transportation, you said?
Yeah, for the, for the deliveries, yeah.
So another question is, any veteran who live in Chelsea qualify for benefits with you or no?
It goes as varied as a veteran, it can be a widow, it can be a spouse, it can be a child under the age of eighteen. Or over the age of eighteen who was deemed disabled before the age of eighteen. It can go that wide, I've had that. And then, you know, um, it could be as narrow as just the veteran. So it it's varied, it's varied, there's, there's no, you know, you gotta go each case by case and ask.
So in other words, not everybody who's a veteran qualify for, for the law?
It depends, I I don't like turning anyone away. Um, so if a veteran comes in, let's say, for example, with a dishonorable discharge. Uh, you know, often the military doesn't really provide a lot of psychological, emotional support. It, you know, the research shows that it it it, it's the company commander. If the company commander i- is open to family support services, that kind of trickles down to to his team. And his first sergeant and and all the uh platoon sergeants and and you get a better result. But in some units, it it's old school and and there's, there's not those, um, those support services aren't really promoted. So in those cases, um, you 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 get bad results and sometimes there's veterans who have bad discharges that can be improved. So if they come in with a dishonorable discharge, there's not a lot of federal services that that are available. But I will work with them to, there's, there's an Harvard Legal Group, there's a Veterans Legal Group. And we'll work on trying to get at least, I mean, to go from dishonorable to honorable, unlikely. But we can definitely try to upgrade it to at least a general discharge, maybe. And that'll open up a whole world of services for that veteran. And also too, keep in mind that, um, if the the veteran, even though the veteran's dishonorable. There is a chance they can get V A medical services. You know, it 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 depends how you advocate, who you talk to. You know, we all have people that we know on the inside that can, that can help out a little.
All right, thank you.
I just wanna know how your, how things are with this new uh staff person.
They're working out well, um, it it's tough because. You know, the 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 dynamic of the department and and the needs are changing a little bit, so he's kind of caught up a lot with the food program.
Mm-hmm.
And gathering documents and reaching out to agencies. So there's not a lot that he can do other than that because he's only there nineteen hours. Also too, in the department, we have, we don't have enough space for him. So he can only work certain days of the week.
Mm.
But overall, like, you know, pretty good, pretty good.
I thought, I thought it was a good hire, I've known him for a long time, he's a great kid, so it was nice to see him.
He's doing really, really good.
Yeah, well, thank you for all that you guys, that you both do.
You wanna share any upcoming events with the uh councils?
Other than the uh, May eighteenth event, uh, at Chelsea Square in front of the police station. Um, we're gonna have that, uh, the, we're gonna be planting flags for the Field of Honor. And of course, um, I I, I sent out the communication.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the itinerary for uh Monday, May twenty-ninth, ten A M. Um, we're all, you know, we're all looking forward to having a a, a good event, a good presentation. We have Superintendent, uh, Robert Engel, he's gonna be pro- uh, providing some, a few words of support. And, um, because they did have, you know, a significant amount of losses, um, at the home through COVID, so. Um, and our guest speaker, of course, is gonna be our very own local Sergeant Jose Otero. Um, and and it looks like it's gonna be a pretty solid event, weather permitting. That's always, that's always the, the major key on how many people show up.
One question, make it quick.
So downstairs, there's elderly homeowners. Like, do you send the old people, some of them don't know the events and they don't, they don't get to it? Do you send them a letter to the veteran homeowners to tell them this is what the events that are happening? Because some of them are old and they don't, they don't know, so do you notify them?
So right now, when we brought, that's one of the issues that we've had longstanding is communication. So when we brought, uh, Juan Carlos, um, on, on board, he's really good with with uh computers and the technical stuff. So he's increased our mailing list to about three hundred people, three fifty. And that includes all the tax abatement, veteran, you know, military families, our current. Um, client list and the food list. So it it's, it's a work in progress, so we're at around three fifty. By the end of it all, we should probably be around five hundred.
So you do send them a letter?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the Public Library is next. Sarah Day Jackson, our director. I'll preface this by saying that our, our esteemed director has given us notice that she's moving on to the Boston Public Library System. And uh, she'll, after uh ten years, Sarah, ten, ten years of service?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years, so. Uh, so it's a, uh, we're, we're happy for her success and we're sorry for, uh, to lose her.
Yeah, it's a big loss.
Our loss, so.
We'll be taking one of Tracy's buses to visit her.
Anyway, so, so if you turn to page two eighteen, two eighteen in the book is the Public Library. Mission Statement Followed by Department at a Glance: Accomplishments and Goals. On page two twenty-one, you'll see the outline of the expenses. The salaries are up contractually by about four percent. The operations and maintenance categories have some slight increases. I'll highlight one in particular, this is the forty-eight hundred dollar community events increase. Which is mostly for the Children's Literacy Day, where in the past we had relied on donations to supplement that. And we think this is short money to be able to avoid doing that in the future. So that's forty-eight hundred on community events, there's a couple of others, uh, related to books and office supplies that are specific to Sarah's needs. The overall department increase is six point four percent. The number of employees, there are about fourteen listed, but the F T E is closer to eight. Because there are some part-time positions, you'll see those listed on page two twenty-three. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sarah for comments and questions.
I'll try to keep it fairly brief, I could talk about library services all night long, um, thank you all. I'm gonna start just by saying the Chelsea Public Library provides a wealth of current informational, educational and recreational resources, free of charge to all members of the community and beyond. Library is pretty well-known in the community for its knowledgeable, friendly, and I have to say, amazing staff. Um, a welcoming and safe environment, uh, it's convenient, we have current technology. We strive to offer clean and safe facilities, um, safety is a priority for us. Um, unique and engaging programming and materials that are reflective of a diverse population. Technology that's responsive to community needs and we consistently challenge ourselves to introduce new and dynamic programming. As Ed mentioned, our budgets are mostly in the areas of library books and supplies and community events, and I'll just touch upon each of those briefly. Um, books, along with all other services, have gone up in price. Um, ebook licensing, the majority of which we get through our network membership. Uh, but we do purchase some ebooks that are just for Chelsea residents. Um, periodicals have gone up a bit, we provide museum passes that are partially funded by the Friends of the Library, but also funded by, um, the General Fund. And just to give you a quick snapshot on the books, why those increased, um, besides the pricing. We typically, the state actually requires that we spend a certain amount of money on materials, um, books, periodicals, ebooks, video games. Um, the state threshold is uh based on population and a bunch of other formulas. But they require that we spend fifty-four thou, in fiscal twenty-three, they resp- required that we spend fifty-four thousand dollars on materials. So the majority of that is actually funded through our state aid grant. Um, and then the city supplements that with the eight thousand dollars that we have in the budget. Um, for office and copier supplies, those have obviously gone up, toner has gone up, paper has gone up. Since pandemic, we have noticed, um, a large influx of patrons coming in to print documents. Um, we introduced a mobile printing service this year, so people could print right from their phones. So we get a lot of people from City Hall walking across the street to print their documents that they need. Um, as the city clerk mentioned, things that they need for parking permits, um, a variety of other things that they need over here. Um, we also were the second library in the state, as shown in one of our other, um, the portions of our accomplishments. We were the second library in the state to be part of the Access and Justice Program, which is a fairly new program. Uh, Norwood was the first library in the state, we were the second. And that involves, uh, providing a place for people to attend virtual court hearings, print court documents. Um, we were sort of the, I just presented on this last week at the Massachusetts Library Association Conference. Um, people are very interested in what Chelsea has been doing because we, if you're not familiar, too familiar with the building, we don't have individual study spaces. So we had to really sort of come up with ideas on to create a space where someone could attend a virtual court hearing. Um, the ni- the need is here, we have district court, we have housing court, we have family court. Um, but we did notice that people were printing, needing to print court documents. Um, just a huge need in printing, I guess, services in general, and that's why that line has sort of gone up. And then the community events line, um, not only is it to support Chelsea Reads or the Family Literacy Day event. We also hosted, uh, last year, our first teen takeover event, um, which some of you attended. It was immensely successful, huge, uh, we decided that that was something that we needed to keep doing, funding it, um, so this line also goes to that. And, um, as far as our accomplishments, um, we had, we did a lot this year, we're pretty proud of almost everything we did. But I guess if I had to pick one, uh, we applied for and were awarded an ARPA grant through the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, um, which was fifty thousand dollars. And we used all that money in our teen space. We tripled the size of the teen space, it's its own room. Um, we quadrupled teen programming, we bought computers, we bought Wii switches. We just made it an area just for teens, which took a lot of staff work and time to move entire collections out of the space. Um, it was physical labor, it was labors of love, and we're still working continuously on programming for that space. But we have seen a huge influx of teens coming in after school. I don't have concrete numbers, because we just let them come in and hang out and do their thing, because that's what they wanted. And then the important goal that we're gonna be, the library will be focused on in fiscal twenty-four. Is to receive input, revise and submit an updated long-range strategic plan with the state. Um, ours is currently in need of updating. That will clearly outline facility and programming improvements, improve access to technology and services. Um, and continue to update and evaluate our facilities with the help, we get a lot of help from D P W. Um, as other members of the H H S Department, we work closely with other departments. We are not afraid to leave the building and go to other departments and locations and doing all the tabling at events and stuff. So that is public, our goal for fiscal twenty-four.
Questions on my left? Card Taylor?
So, uh, I don't, I don't, I think you, you pretty much addressed the, um. The questions that I had in your opening, opening statement and, um. I wanted to thank you for the job that you've done, um, at the library, we appreciate it. And, um, I was, I stopped by and saw the teen takeover and it was pretty awesome. And, and, and all the, all the game, all the gaming, it was, it was, it was good. And I think that that's, that's, you know, I think we need a lot more of this stuff, but, you know, I think that, that. Chelsea teens are the ones that are neglected the most, I think, in this, in this community. And it, they're, they're kind of hardest to wrangle, I've, I've got one, or two, actually. So, you know. I appreciate, um, I appreciate that and I acknowledge, uh, you for the, for the teen takeover event was great. So, you know, I appreciate, I appreciate that, and I acknowledge you for the, for the teen takeover event. It was great. And we're sorry to lose you. Other than that, that's, I, I think everything else is pretty much, pretty much straightforward. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consulor Culverell? Consul Lopez? Consulor?
I second what Consul Taylor said. I went to the teen takeover. Beautiful. Love the innovation. Love everything that's happening over there with young folks. Wish you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors, and it's been an honor working with you.
Thank you.
Just wishing you well on your new endeavor. Good luck.
Thank you. I just have to mention that the new position is with the Boston Public Library, but I'm the Metro Boston Library Network Coordinator, and Chelsea is a member of our network, so I will be back. I will be, you are, you are my people.
That's nice to see.
So I will be, since we, we're part of this network that are all the Boston Public Library branches, Chelsea, Walden, Fisher College, Newman School. They're all the people that I will sort of be facilitating initiatives and communication, and Chelsea is my member, so I'll be looking out for Chelsea. Thank you.
I'll be in the teen space.
Yeah, I'll be in the teen space. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
So ISD?
Mike McAteer. Inspection Services.
So Mike-
Michael is still awakened a lot of you.
All right, Mike, way to go.
You'll, you'll see in the budget that one half of the position, one half position that we're asking for is an electrical inspector going into next year. The, our former electrical inspector retired. He has been replaced with a new full-time electrical inspector. But there's a lot of electrical inspecting, inspecting to do here, and it is one of our profit centers here. So fees around electrical inspections are, it's both a safety issue and a cost, and a, a place that we want to put a lot of attention on. So, so we're asking for a part-time position coming into this year so we can keep the work on pace.
Okay, so if you turn to page one fifty-five, page one fifty-five in the book is the Inspecktional Services Division's start of their budget. The mission statement is shown there. Department at a glance accomplishments, goals, and initiatives follow. You go to page one fifty-eight, and I'll turn your attention to one fifty-eight, the expense categories. Regular salaries have increased four point two percent. The temporary line that just, that is not striking, that it's a four thousand dollar, a four thousand, four thousand percent increase. It's a forty thousand dollar increase, which is the position Ned just spoke of, and that's being funded in this temporary line, which previously had a thousand dollars in it, and that's what's causing that. Come into the operations section. There are several increases that are minimal in nature. Rent lease due to a new copier lease, conference and travel costs went up for monthly meetings for the inspectors, and the new books and code changes that require updates are in the dues categories. So overall, this department is up seven point one five percent. There are seventeen and a half positions funded in this budget, and those are shown on page one fifty-nine and one sixty. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike McAteer for any comments he'd like to make and answer any questions.
Hello, everybody. You know me, Mike McAteer. Inspection Service Department protects the health and safety of our residents through the permanent inspection process for construction, housing, sanitation, food establishments, et cetera. The other big issue, the accomplishment, but it keeps going, is we finally finished our five-year program after a bunch of years. So now we're going, we're starting all over again. It's actually, it's actually way more efficient. The inspectors are scheduled, like have full schedules almost every day because I guess the people, you know, know what to expect. You call them, send the letter out. Now they're calling back. Before, they didn't really know what to expect. I'm kind of surprised. We're still finding a lot of issues that weren't there five years ago, mostly construction, new construction, interior construction with no permits. Something you really can't see unless we get calls from people. And now with the house, the housing inspectors and the houses, we're finding that, that the bathrooms, the showers, the basement, safety attic space. If we, if, if we can legally let them keep it, we, we, we inspect it, permit it, and they get to keep it. Unfortunately, sometimes there's a new apartment that has to be removed.
Questions on the left?
Thank you for everything that you do in our community around the clock, right? When I've ever reached out to you, you just respond, and you're always there for, for the community. My question is similar to what I've asked other folks that have come before us this evening, tonight, and that is, what departments do you think your department should be working closer with, right? When I hear about the fire department going in and, and evacuating a family because there are some code violations, is, is that chain of communication to your department smooth? If the police department shows up, if the Board of Health is there, or vice versa, what is your communication like with the Board of Health? If you go in and you see that there are severe code violations, understanding there are children and families that are inhaling some of the stuff in these units and stuff like that?
We have a great rapport with the fire department. We work almost seamlessly. They call us, we call them. A lot of times, we won't make a decision till we, we discuss it amongst each other. And nine, nine, more than ninety-nine percent of the time, we're both on the same page, like right down the line. Same with the police. We have a police, a program with the police where a few times a month, we have a police officer come out for a couple hours with us. They show us their problem areas where there's, there's inspectional services problems. We'll use them to go somewhere where it might be not a hundred percent safe to go, and we have an officer with us. It works very well. Both those departments work really well.
My other question is about accessibility to the community. So I was informed this week, actually, that there's a new voice recording response to ISD when you call in. Is that, is that true? I haven't actually tried it myself.
It should be.
Oh, okay, so there's someone responding.
We have, so, so the only problem we have is we have three, three main numbers and usually two people answering them. So, I mean, we call them back. My cellphone, since the pandemic, I switched everything onto my cellphone, so you call my office, it goes right to my cellphone. So it's easy for me.
I believe that. My other question is, and I think some of my colleagues have asked us in some previous meetings that we've had with you, Mike, is, is there anything online? If someone doesn't want to call in, or if someone doesn't want to come in in person, can they submit something virtually?
I mean, by email, I guess it's the only real way to, to, we really need, like, if, if it's talking about housing complaints, we really need to make sure it's that person. We've had issues before. So, I mean, we prefer either someone coming in or, or in person. There's really no, there's no, there's not really good. I mean, if, an email, we investigate, but at some point, we need to talk to the person.
And in this budget, and I promise this is my last question now, in this, the budget chart, where do we see the fines that are given out? Would it be here?
No, no, those, those are in the revenue section of the budget, so I think at the very beginning of the book.
So I, I took the last page. I, I printed, it was four hundred and seventy-four pages. I didn't want to waste the lumber. Four hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred tickets last year in tickets, and maybe, maybe five thousand might be Mike Sandoval. Might not be from me. He writes a couple a month, maybe. Most of our assets, all housing, housing violations and trash violations. Really, nothing else, nothing else really. I wish I could do building violations in it. We write twenty-one D tickets on building violations. It's almost like a parking ticket, so it's very hard to get paid or, or lean them. And we probably write, if they're hard to write, you gotta do them manually. Maybe ten thousand dollars a year in that.
Thank you, Mike.
So at the very beginning of the book, on page six, you'll see the FY twenty-four revenue projections and budget and licenses and permits, that million six fifty is part of what the forty U's are put into. So you don't see the individual lines? We can provide that information separately if you'd like. Terry?
I just want to say thank you from, from my community's perspective. You're always available. Yeah, I just want to say thank you. I'm tired. I'm tired, but I just want to say thank you. You do a great job. Your team is-
Thank you.
Amazing. Thank you.
Consul Taylor?
Yeah, thanks for everything that you do. We do appreciate it. I just have one, one nagging question about stuff, and if you can, if you can give me the answer, because I remember talking to the previous city manager, and he was kind of hemming and hawing about it. So when there's a police call, and they go in and they find one of the illegal apartments, and you've got people living in, the whole family's living in one bedroom, and it's all down the, is that reported to you guys every time?
Not every time. A lot of times they do. We, we'll get an email. We'll get something from, sometimes they ask nine-one-one to, to send us an email. Other times, that's what this officer is. He's supposed to be, he does catch up when, when someone tells him. So, so when we go out that day, he'll say, hey, Officer Garcia was at this call, and he, he told me to let you know there's something. Can we stop by there?
So, so there's not really, there's not really a clear policy on this?
There isn't. There isn't. I mean, I don't think too much gets through, but-
So, you mean, you don't think?
I don't think we, they miss too much.
Okay, all right. So, so you're not, you're not seeing, you're not seeing it as, as that big a problem?
No, we, we don't really run the problems-
The reason why I'm bringing this, this up is because last, last year, you know, I was talking to a lot of police officers and asking them what they thought that one of the big public safety issues are that they're confronting every day, and the same answer came up again and again and again and again because it's like, you know, it's, it's, the, the whole, the whole thing can be not only a safety issue in regards to fire and, and stuff, but other, you know, other issue, like it's a, the cops go in, they don't know who's there, or whatever it is. So all I'm saying is, is, I mean, this is what I was told. So I'm trying to figure out, and when I asked the, the previous city manager about it, he was like, you know, he didn't, he didn't quite want it.
So, so I'm just trying to get to the, what's really going on? I mean, and is this, is this a, you know, is it, is it a, is it a real public safety, or is it just kind of? Even if one gets by, it's, it's bad. So we really should have this liaison. We should, we really should talk to him and have him reach out. In the past, we've done it. And, and if any other officer runs into something, they contact him.
I mean, we just want everybody to be safe is, is the, is the issue. And so, you know, that's the reason why I'm, I'm, and, and I think it's only going to be getting worse. So, so that's, that's, that's my, that's my issue in asking this question. And, and, and also, one additional related question, I guess. I know we're adding another half job to your, to your, your bucket of people. Do you feel like that's enough to, to really do an effective job at, at, I mean?
We're, we're effective? We could always use more bodies.
I, I don't mean that you're not effective in what you do, but is the jo, is the job load, I know you are, but is, is the job load so big that you need more people to do it?
I could get more done with more people. That's for sure. For sure. We're making it work. I could use more people.
All right. All right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Consulor Culverell?
I've got a couple of questions. I see here you issued a lot of forty U violation tickets.
Yes, sir.
Why so many? You've been going around a lot?
Yes, this trash is a problem. The rodent problem is bad. We knew it was going to be bad in, you know, when we had such a mild summer, I mean, mild winter. So I have someone out there every day checking on trash. A lot of those tickets are for housing violations, too. You know of a couple of, of property managers, when they don't, when they don't fix problems in, in timely manner, they get, they get heavily fined, so.
But I got some complaints, especially one constituents of mine, right? He put out trash bags.
I know.
He had, he put all his trash bags. The garbage men didn't take his trash bags, so he put them back in his house, and he got croaked. He told me he was getting fifty dollars, hundred fifty, three hundred dollar ticket.
I heard about that situation.
So what do you do with stuff like that? The guy was following the rules. He brought all the bags back in his house.
So, so-
So what was he supposed to do? Leave them all outside?
Problem. He, he followed the DPW's rules, and then he, then he put it, and, and then the neighbor complained. They couldn't get by. It was a safety issue. It was a, it was a health issue. I think he appealed them. I hope he did all right, because I, I think, I think he, his family, I fail for him. I fail for him. We're working with that, that family now.
Here's another question I got for you. The car allowance, that's fifty-two thousand dollars?
So it hasn't changed since last year or two years ago? It's just more inspectors. When you get that many inspectors?
That's on page one fifty-eight.
Well, that's, that's contractual by the union contract, and, and we chose to pay them this way rather than provide city vehicles. So they're using their own vehicles, and they're getting a, a car allowance as contracted with, is it SEIU Union? SEIU Union.
So when they put, so is it, it's cheaper for us to contract them than to get their own vehicles? Don't we pay insurance and everything else for these? What, when, when they contract it, right? They cover everything. If they get in an accident, if the car breaks. So I, I'm trying to understand. Is it cheaper for us to get it or to just contract it to them?
We think it's cheaper to pay the car allowance than to purchase vehicles and insure vehicles and maintain vehicles for each of the inspectors.
Okay, and there's another one here I don't understand. What is a temporary? Does a temporary work as you guys?
No, that's the line that Ned spoke about with the part-time person that's being proposed. That's where we're placing the funding for that.
That's a temporary. That's what that means, right? The temporary person you're hiring. I don't see much more. You're doing your job. You seem to be going around issuing all kinds of tickets. You brought the city over a million dollars in building permits and- Well, I don't, I don't have much. And then here, well, here's the last question I have. I don't got no more. You, you went through your whole program, right, for the, the five-year program?
Yes.
So now that will start up again when? In five years?
It already started. As soon as we finished that, we started all over.
Yesterday.
So you mean it starts tomorrow?
It took eight years, so we're, we're already behind for the next, next cycle.
Consul Lopez?
Mike, a quick question. Can you explain what's building emergency demo?
So I barely touched that this year, thank God. That, so that was a low number. It was like five, three thousand, four thousand. When there's a fire and we can't get a hold of the owner, the owner can't afford it, we bought up the house. Well, there was one year where we had to tear our house down, and we didn't have enough money. So Tom had to go to the council, to you guys, and ask for the money, and you gave him the money to tear the building down. The city got the money eventually, so he didn't want to have to come back and find you again, so he asked for twenty-five thousand last year in the last couple of years. We haven't, I might have used three hundred. I, I might not have used it this year.
But you, you said the city get the money back when you?
City gets it back. Yeah, they lean the property when they do it, so when they, when they bought up the house, eventually you're going to get that money back. One time I did use the twenty-five thousand, never again.
Okay.
Consul Delali?
Thank you. Last year when you were here, I remember asking, because we, you know, I remember there were residents here, and there was all this stuff about inspections and whatnot. And I remember asking, like, do you need more folks? We didn't give you additional folks last year, did we?
Yeah, you did. You gave me somebody.
We gave, what, what did we give you?
You gave me a, a, a third clerical person.
Say that again?
A third clerical person, a, a temporary clerical person.
But no additional inspectors or?
You did give me an additional inspector, and I have to fill it, yes.
A clerical and an inspector. How's that working out?
The clerical's excellent. The other one, we don't have, we, we, we're moving the room around. I think we talked about it a couple meetings ago. We had to get a, we had trouble getting an electrical inspector. January came, and I didn't have an electrical inspector. I just scrambled. Finally, Tommy, I got Tommy Carter.
And you got a good deal with Tommy Carter. He is unbelievable.
I think so. I just don't know. I, I didn't know if he could, if he could do that in his, his rest of his life. I'm still a little worried, but he's, he's working out excellent. So that took some time. One of, the supervisor was out for three months for the sickness, so, so we're still trying to post that last job and get it in there.
It's just, you know, we keep, we keep building, and I, and I get it. We keep building all these extra apartments. It's just, you know, we keep, we keep building and I, and I get it. We keep building all these extra apartments and to think that your office is gonna be able to handle all of these additional units without, you know, giving resources. Again, I am just very fearful of what the future of the city means, because we, we're getting so big and we can't even house the staff in the building. If you got an, actually this part-time person, I'm like, where the heck are they gonna go?
That's the other issue.
Because I look into your office and I get anxiety, because it already looks so tight. Anyway, thank you for everything you do. I don't really have any questions, so thank you.
You got a question? Got a couple of questions. What did it cost up to, for us to board up, um, Forbes?
Oh, Alex, I think it's, it's, so it's everything? Alex is handling that. It's two hundred thousand. He boarded everything up. I think there's a fence that's along the, the, um, the railroad track. It's wide open. It's dangerous. I think he cut brush down, but, and then I think there's some engineering costs for, for consultants. The last time I saw it was two hundred thousand. I didn't pay it though, so I think, I think the plan of the power did.
My, my other question, because everybody thinks you just do inspections, but when somebody comes up and they wanna build something and you have to deny them, can you explain what the process is after you get denied from your work goals and coworkers?
Sure. So, developers come in all the time. Sometimes homeowners wanna expand on their property. They come to, they come to my office. They, it happens. I gotta, I gotta do seven or eight denial letters a, a month. They, they, uh, they bring me plans. I, uh, I review the plans. I find out if there's anything missing that doesn't meet our zoning standards. If there is, I have to write a denial letter. Write the denial letter, signaling out every single piece of zoning relief required. After that, they go to, to John DePree's office and they got, and they apply for a special permit of variance. After that, twenty-one days passes and then they go in front of the, the ZBA to discuss their project. Then it goes to the planning board to discuss the product. Then it goes back to ZBA every two weeks. Then after that, if they get approval, there's a twenty-one day waiting period. Then after that, they're free to get their permit. So, it's almost a three-month process.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor, just on the question of Forbes, we secured all the money we, uh, expended at Forbes to date. So, the, we've gone to, we've, we've filed our lien against the property. And, uh, just approaching just under three hundred thousand.
Just under three hundred thousand. Seeing no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have emergency management. You'll, you'll see one of the eleven positions we're requesting this year, three of which are at police, include a full-time, include a full-time emergency management assistant director. You may recall that before, um, that we didn't have a line of succession in the, uh, emergency management 911. And, uh, this cost us dearly a few years ago without having trained personnel behind the director when the director retired. And, uh, so Steve has been rebuilding the department for three years and is now in a position to, uh, bring on a assistant director and fill out his team. So, uh, on that, on that note, I'll have Ed just introduce the budget for a moment and then go to Steve.
Yes, councils, if you'll turn to page one fifty-one. One fifty-one is the expense chart. Previous to that would be the mission statement, as we talked about before, so you can look back on that. Um, but the salary increases at eleven percent. That's primarily due to the new position that Ned just spoke about. In the operations section, I would highlight two areas here. The first is the computer maintenance increase of two hundred and twenty thousand. That is primarily due to the new CAD system, which Steve will speak about shortly. The second item is emergency housing increase of ninety-nine thousand, and that has to do with the sheltering for displaced families. And he'll speak on that in a few minutes as well. So, overall, the entire budget is up twenty-nine point nine one percent. And that's because of the new position proposed and those two operational increases, significant increases. So, with that, I'll have Steve Staffier speak on this.
Thank you both. Good evening. The Office of Emergency Management oversees the following divisions: Emergency Management, Emergency Communications, 911, and the Fire Alarm System Maintenance. The office provides critical 911 services to the citizens and critical radio dispatch services to our police, fire, and EMS first responders. In addition, my office is responsible for the maintenance of the mission-critical public safety radio infrastructure as well as the fire alarm telegraph system citywide. Within the Emergency Management Division, we provide planning, training, coordination, as well as logistical support for planned and unplanned events. And as an example, I wanna give you, earlier you heard the fire chief spoke, uh, and earlier I know Public Health spoke on a couple of initiatives that Emergency Management has been coordinating and behind. One of them is active shooter hostile event. So, that's not only police and fire at all, that's emergency management. We're the driving force behind the planning and training, holding those tabletop exercises. Uh, the second is the, um, registry, the special needs registry that we've been working very closely with Flora's group on um, that we're about to unveil next week. And that's been a very special project citywide. That's gonna help my department especially, when we talk about disaster preparedness, sheltering, evacuation, and so on. It's gonna give me a snapshot of the folks in the city, the residents, that it needs some extra help. It also helps my dispatches as they receive calls for emergency. It'll pop up in the new computer-rated dispatch so that if a resident needs some type of special care, uh, they'll be able to give a heads up to fire, police, and EMS that there's a situation going on there. So, those are two, two big programs. We've been behind heavily. As far as overall budget for FY twenty-four, the increase due to staffing reorganization, as Ed and Ned spoke about, uh, new capital improvements and initiatives. Uh, three of the larger initiatives, the computer-rated dispatch system. So, the system we have is outdated, similar to what the fire department is going through with their record management system. So, finally, in the city, we're gonna have one combined computer-rated dispatch system for both police and fire um, that all my dispatchers will be able to use instead of having two separate systems. This system dovetails with the new record management system that the fire chief spoke about earlier as well as the new record management system that the police department, um, is putting together. So, we'll have quite a powerful system behind the scenes when we receive those calls. Um, additionally, improved emergency shelter housing program, as you just heard about. So, we're gonna increase the funding that's there. That was kind of ad hoc. So, when I first arrived, and I'm sure I probably briefed out my first budget session, uh, we really didn't have a plan here in the city of folks that are displaced, especially fire victims in the middle of the night. And what happened was, we put together a hotel program on the spot and, um, put a little bit of funding aside. Well, the program was so powerful, so popular, and worked so well that at the time, uh, Tom, when he was here, um, he put the little bug on my ear. He says, "You know what? Let's, let's bring this up quite a bit, because this is a pretty good program." Uh, and that's where that comes from, that request. Uh, but what happens is, if there is no, um, owner on scene or somebody that can take responsibility to help these folks out, um, obviously, we're not gonna leave them in the street. It's just not happening. And we put them up in hotels, and it's been an extremely successful program. Uh, so much that I spoke at a regional, um, fire arson meeting about it. They had interest, and the city of Revia has interest in the program. So, it's, it's taken off. Uh, lastly, the assistant director position, which they had mentioned. Um, the last time was probably seven, eight years ago that we could find that the agency did have an assistant director. So, when I got here, I knew I needed to stabilize the emergency communications portion of it. Um, I was hit with COVID right away, obviously operating the hotel. But now, after three years, um, this is the logical next level for reorganization is to put an assistant director in. I plan on using that position to run the emergency communication side of the operation. That frees me up to run emergency management more full-time, since that's a growing needs there. Um, FY twenty-three, we were able to, so past accomplishments, we were able to complete phase two of the citywide radio infrastructure, uh, under a capital improvement plan. Um, and that went very well, and we're requesting again. You'll see in the CIP, the final year of it, phase three. That was another area that when I arrived here, the radio systems for both police, fire, and even public works were in shambles. Um, and we brought them up to state-of-the-art. So, with this final phase, um, they'll have a state-of-the-art with backup and continuity of operation with these radio systems. A major goal for FY twenty-four is the complete renovations of our emergency communications, emergency operations center. Obviously, the building renovations, I'm sure you folks heard about. That's under a, a current CIP that's ongoing. Um, we're in the process now of picking a general contractor, and I'm hopeful. I'm looking for January, February, I move in. And I know some folks tease me and say it's probably gonna be the springtime. Um, but hopefully that moves along quickly, and that'll be a state-of-the-art operations center across the way. So...
Questions on the left?
Uh, just wanna say thank you. Thank you for your work, and I, um, I echo your, uh, your comments about Chelsea being very unique when it comes to families being displaced for fires. Um, our neighboring communities don't have the same support that Chelsea residents do, so thank you guys so much for all that you do.
Calbro. Todd Taylor.
I've got, uh, just, just one question. I think it's, I think it's great about the integrated computer systems and, I mean, my question on the emergency housing. Now that we're putting money towards this, are we still getting the aid from, uh, Red Cross on the, on the fires for displaced families, the same amount?
Yeah, so that's an excellent question, sir. So, COVID again was a game changer for the response for Red Cross and Salvation Army, as well as some other programs. Um, it's just not what used to be prior to COVID. They admit it. They're the first to admit it. So, the fire chief and I called for a meeting with Red Cross not too long ago. We sat with them. They gave us an update of what they can provide.
Yep.
Um, it's clothing, gift cards, a bunch of different programs, mental health services, and so on. But when it actually comes to housing, unless we're talking about a major event, um, you know, statewide activation type of events, uh, they're really not there to do that.
Yeah.
So, because...
So, it's a good thing we did this program.
Yeah. And again, I, I, you know, I'm proud of it. So, uh, again, even today, uh, I spent the day at a regional tabletop exercise for evacuation and sheltering with Chelsea, Winthrop, Revia, and Everett. And that topic came up. And again, all of them looked toward Chelsea. You folks remember the fire alarm fire recently?
Yeah.
That Winthrop just had in that apartment complex?
Yeah.
So, I went over to help the police chief and the fire chief out, and long story short, uh, they took a page out of our book and they ended up putting all those folks at a hotel because shelter operations just wasn't gonna cut it. And that's the other thing to keep in mind, folks, when we talk about the dollars or the funding end of it. To open up a shelter and all of the costs and logistics that go behind it, and then putting somebody up at a hotel, it's comparable.
Yeah, yeah. Alright. Um, yeah, so that was my, that was my, that was my one question about that. Um, and thank you for what you've done. You came in and you rebuilt the, rebuilt the department, and we, we appreciate it, and, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Cooper.
I was wondering if you implement already the evacuation map, how to leave the city, how to come into the city? We, we, uh, can people find out exactly where it is and how to do it?
So, I knew that question was coming. So, yes, I know, and some other city councils have asked that as well. So, that's exactly what we're doing right now with this regional, um, exercise program. We have one more meeting next week, and then we'll have sort of a hot wash meeting, if you will. But the result of these, uh, exercises we're doing with the region is to create a plan. And the plan is two-part. It'll show the evacuation routes and it'll show, um, some plans behind either sheltering in place or sheltering remote. So, that is, it's, it's on its way. It's active.
Uh, and, and one more question I have for you, then no more questions. A lot of people sometimes, they call me and tell me that they don't get enough Spanish interpreters when they call. Seems like they don't understand, so they hang up right away, 'cause people don't understand what they're telling them. You have Spanish, and so when someone calls and cannot speak English, do they automatically go to a Spanish interpreter?
Yep. Another good question. So, uh, close to half my staff does, is bilingual. Um, if they, if those particular individuals aren't on duty, that staff, um, then we utilize what state 911 has provided to us for free as part of the 911 phone system, and that's interpreter services. So, immediately, we press that button. It conferences in the contract interpreter services. We tell them what language. The person comes on the line, and we continue. So, that's there. Nobody should be hanging up at all, and please let me know if that happens. Um, and that we even extend that service, even if, um, it may be a police or fire response in which they have a language barrier. We can always patch them in.
I have no more questions.
Councilor Lopez.
Yes, uh, you have two stipend things here. One is language, and Councilor Cooper was just saying about, if I don't speak English well, people are afraid to call. But you said you give a stipend for, for language here. So, is that for Latino, for the Spanish-speaking?
Yeah, as long as the employee can show, um, that they speak at least one other language other than English, then under their contract, their collective bargaining contract, they get a language stipend. So, currently, I have, again, close to half that is Spanish, and I believe we have one or two that speak a couple other languages slightly. Uh, but of course, Spanish is the more prevalent.
What's the other stipend thing here?
I'm sorry?
The other stipend thing here? There's one for language. There's another, we'll say it's just a stipend. What is that?
Oh, that's your, your emergency management directors?
Oh, is that how it's worded on there? Yeah, it's worded different. So, that's the two supervisors. Right, because the two supervisors are functional and have other duties than just dispatch supervisor, under their contract, they get a stipend as well. The perfect example is Paul Cooleyan's here, Supervisor Cooleyan. Not only has he run, uh, dispatch as a supervisor position, he's also in charge of the fire alarm system in the city. So, there's a stipend for that.
Okay. Um, I heard, uh, the fire chief, when he was here earlier, said that most of the calls come from 911 and they disturb emergency calls sometimes, and when they're not emergency. Uh, do you have any other number where people can call when it's not really an emergency, like?
So, the city does have a 311 program that falls onto public works, um, and we'll redirect them if we have to. Uh, but quite a few people are just very comfortable dialing 911, um, for services. Now, we have a business line that's posted, but it goes to the same dispatcher, so it's almost irrelevant what number they dial. It's taking up the same workload. It really doesn't matter.
Alright. If I call from my cell phone, 911, 911, it goes to state police and, and, uh, from here, yes, it does?
No more.
No more?
No more. That, that changes years ago.
I was just gonna ask you that. How can we, but, okay.
Yeah, so the change is, uh, called phase two technology. So, now when you dial 911 from your cell phone, it goes to the nearest public safety entering point. So, in our case, Chelsea here, we have our own, and, uh, we'll see that on the screen. It'll read in meters, and we'll know that it's a cellular call.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Madu.
Last but not least, I'm sorry, I'm really tired and I'm really, like, off.
We save the best for last.
Damn right you did. Um, I, my question is, was about the evacuation plan. I find myself sometimes in traffic. Or the other day, I was just driving down Grove Street, and like, there was a trash truck. And I'm just like, crap, like, if anything blows up behind me, I don't, I don't, we're so congested, I just don't even know where to go. So, we really need that evacuation plan. And I know you said it's on the way, and I appreciate it, but you have no idea how many emergency management directors have sat there and said the same thing in my tenure, and we have yet to, to see one. So, I guess I just wanted to kinda amplify what he said. Um, I do have a question, and it's, how are the overall, 'cause I know that things over in the emergency E91 department, for a couple of years, were kinda hot. Um, between staff, staff were feeling appreciated, but I'm just curious about how everything is going over there.
First part, I just wanna comment. I assure you, you have my word, that we will have a plan, evacuation plan.
I already know it's gonna get done.
Second, um, I could probably turn to Paul on this supervisor, let him answer. But, um, I'd like to think that we did, uh, change the culture in the past three years over there.
Beautiful.
Um, I think it's safe to say that the staff is happy. Um, there's a lot of initiatives going on that they see, whether it be a new state-of-the-art building that they're gonna work in. Um, I ensure that they always have a say, uh, you know, in decision-making on, on a lot of stuff that goes on. I'll give you a perfect example. As we went through the process with the architect to design the facility, I made sure they had a wellness room, something they asked for.
Nice.
So, they got a place to go, whether they just need to cool out mentally, or they wanna work out. So, um, the culture has changed quite a bit. So the culture has changed quite a bit. Paul, you're welcome to add.
Yes, I'd like to say, the culture has changed immensely. We went from having an emergency management director that was basically a man in a uniform sitting in an office that would only speak to you when he needed to be spoken to. He had no knowledge of the equipment, no qual, no knowledge of anything that goes on within the indoor operations of the, of our operations. Now, it's a different story. We have a boss that comes in, that'll speak to you, talk to you, like a human being.
That's right.
Won't go out of his way to hurt you.
Yeah.
More than familiar with the operations. And more, more importantly is, he's more, he's more in tune with the equipment that we all work with. So it's not like we have to pick a phone up all the time and call a vendor to come in.
Yeah.
I can call Steve. He can give me an answer on how to repair something right away.
Beautiful.
So as far as the culture, I'm going to tell you with 100% certainty and confidence that that culture is far different than it was five years ago.
Thank you, Cooley. I appreciate that. And I appreciate that, Steve, because I know it was a hot situation for a while, and I'm thinking, darn, if we can't get it together there, they're like... I mean, that's where the magic happens, right? And you're responsible for how, how people respond to our emergencies. So, yeah, looking forward to seeing that evacuation plan, although I probably would have evacuated the city by the time it's done. Nonetheless, it's been an honor working with you, and thank you.
Thank you.
You're still going to be on Grove Street.
I have a question for you, Steve. I had the opportunity to work with you in putting together the training for Chelsea residents to participate in being trained in 911. What were some of the drawbacks why we couldn't seem to get people to engage in a program or just drop out of the program after coming today?
Yep. So we held, starting last calendar year, about a handful of workshops to try to have Chelsea residents engage, educate about what the job's about, so that we could hit that mark of hiring residents. And the first couple were successful. We had quite a few people attend. And out of it, I think we did have one, one hire. The last three that we held, we, we had sign up. I worked with HR. We created an Excel sheet. We ensured that folks met the criteria before they came to class. And each class was about six to eight people roughly. When it came to game day, if you will, on that Saturday morning, one of them had one, one woman showed up, and then one of them, nobody showed up. So the woman, for example, it was, you know, she listened to the presentation. She said, but thank you so much. This is a little bit over my head. And then, of course, having one where nobody shows up. The comment I want to make on it is, this job's changed drastically to be a emergency communications dispatcher. Unfortunately, in Washington, it's still classified as a clerical position, and that kills us. That hurts us. There is a wave happening across the country, even across the state, to change the job, place it as a first responder position. There's a bill in the state senate and house, we've been working with some of the state reps and so on, to move those bills along and to pass that. Once that happens, a couple of things, once that passes, a couple of things happen. The dispatches will move into a different retirement program. Probably Group Two, which is nurses and other folks with hazards. Group Four, obviously, is the ultimate. That's police and fire. The other piece of it is, now that they're first responders, they become sworn personnel, and they're elevated. And we're going to get more traction into the job. Obviously, the pay scale would change and so on. Right now, it's extremely tough to recruit the talent that's needed. Multitasking is probably the number-one skill set that we look for, and then employee retention. I can't tell you how many people we've hired that they come aboard. We spend the money on training them all that time and effort, and they become a police officer or a fire fighter. Now, I teased the police chief and fire chief. I said, you're welcome. I gave you a good product. But we try as best we can, and I can't thank HR enough, they're a huge player in this, that when we do the interview process, we emphasize to the folks exactly what this job is all about. But it's very, very tough recruiting, and I completely respect the residency, but that also, that, that can be tough too, if you limit it, because it's a very special skill set to do a job like that. But we will continue, you know, targeting the residents and holding workshops as needed. Right now, I'm lucky. I'm pretty much at 100% staffing. So.
Could I just say one more thing? Just in regards to the job itself, I'm not used to this presence here, what, what goes on with the budget here, which I want to be interested in. In order to be interested, I have to come up here and see how it happens, how it works, how you guys answer, how you guys ask questions. If you guys want to know what we do and how we do, and get a better idea of what we do, I would, I would express to you to take the time, take a day, take two or three hours out of a night, Friday night, Saturday night, Sunday night, come down. As Counselor Robinson does very seldom, very much, I'm sorry, very much, he stops into our operation. Come down and sit in our building for three or four hours some night. I'm sure you can find the time to do that. If you can find the time to talk to your constituents out in the street, take three or four hours to come down and see what we do, what we put up with, what we have to deal with on a daily basis. That's, that would be much appreciated by each and every person that works in that building.
You folks are more than welcome to, if you want to call in a ride-along and watch what happens in the operation.
I did it before, and I got to go down the secret tunnel. It was really cool. And I, I just want to say that the wellness room that you're talking about, I think that's so important because I can't imagine the heaviness of some of the phone calls that you all received. So I think, I think that, that's a beautiful investment. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. All right. Workout class.
If I can say, in the past, we have, have actually been invited over. I know when the past director was there, we were actually invited over to, to see how you answered the calls and not to criticize you, but to see exactly what you were explaining. We all know it's a tough job. We all know it's a really hectic job. And when people call, they expect the courtesy, and they expect, hey, I'm calling not because I want to talk about you or hear about you, but I have an emergency. It may be not be an emergency to you, but it may, they may feel that it's an emergency, and we do hear things back in the community, you know, for just an extension of courtesy. So, you know, we, some of us have been there. We used to do the ride-on. So, you know, we don't want to, like, micromanage your operation, but we just have to respect...
We don't look at it as being micromanaged. We look at it as a respectable measure for you guys to come down and actually see what we're doing.
Okay.
And what we're going through on a daily basis.
Okay. Well, we wouldn't know on a daily basis. We'll know what we see when we get there, but we have, in the past, have done that. So, I mean, if you want to set up a tour, I mean, you know, the only thing you can do is extend the opportunity.
Yeah, we'll coordinate.
We'd appreciate somebody sitting in that room for three hours to see what goes on in that room. Get a group rest, as I have put in, over three and a half hours up here tonight to see what goes on.
Thank you for the invitation.
Thank you.
And thank you for waiting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is there, are there any questions for emergency?
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Have a good night.
Any more questions?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, we've done it. They actually have ride bys. They're not rides. No, we got to finish. We don't have but a few. We could get it done in 15 minutes.
It's us.
We could actually get it done. We have a few other things, but if you get started.
What?
Are you more comfortable doing it tomorrow?
Yeah.
No, it's not up to them. It's up to the city council. Is that a rule?
Let me ask Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, is that a rule? I mean, we're here.
You want to finish the rest tomorrow with the legislative body, us and Mr. Dunn? It's up, Mr. Dunn, would you feel comfortable if we do it tomorrow?
I would recommend we do it tomorrow because there are two that I am going to present, the regional schools and the retirement that have some changes in them from what they usually have. So it'll take a little bit longer to go through.
Can we do the legislative?
No, just do everything tomorrow. We'll do everything tomorrow, Mr. Dunn.
Yeah, that, that's fine. There's only four, and they're, they're short, but they're, they're extensive on, on regional schools.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you.
Let's go home.